Welcome to the November 18th, 2025 City Council Meeting. As a reminder, we have Spanish Interpretation Services available in person and via Zoom. Is our Zoom on now? We're good? Okay. On Point Language Solutions is in the back left corner. If anyone needs assistance with Interpretation Services, please head over there, and they will hand you a, provide a headset. Is Victor here tonight, or someone else who can? No, okay. Nicholas. We'll now provide some information in Spanish on how to receive Interpretation Services if you are in need of them.
Buenas noches. Todos los que necesiten interpretación por... tenemos los audífonos para que poda proveerles a los que necesiten aquí en el lugar. Y si no, por medio de la internet donde estén mirando. En la parte, en la barra de abajo aparece un globo, y dentro del globo hacen clic, y ahí va a aparecer la opción de idiomas, o como dicen, "languages", y tiene que escoger la opción de español. Thank you.
Thank you. If we can now take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Nagangast.
Here.
Councilmember Penrose.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruddick.
Here.
Mayor Brownstone.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If you all would now please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you. Can we have an approval of the agenda motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Motion passed. Thank you. We will now move on to proclamations and presentations. And I'm very pleased to say we have a very special proclamation to make this evening to somebody who we in this community all admire deeply. And thank you for joining us tonight, Lenny. So just a few words about Lenny before I get on to the proclamation. Lenny Roberts has been a leading force in California Environmental Protection for more than seven decades, beginning with her childhood success in convincing Governor Earl Warren, then-Governor Earl Warren, to protect Hendy Wood State Park in Mendocino County. And for those of you who might not remember, Earl Warren actually then later became Supreme Court Justice. And she got a letter back from him as well. As a Greenfoothills volunteer legislative advocate for nearly 50 years, Lenny has championed the preservation of open space, natural resources, farmland, and public access, especially here on the San Mateo County coast side, earning a reputation for integrity, persistence, and coalition building. She played a pivotal role in creating and expanding the Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, helping protect over 70,000 acres, including Russian Ridge, Prizema Creek redwoods, and Bear Creek redwoods. Lenny helped secure landmark environmental protections such as Proposition 20, the California Coastal Act, San Mateo County's local coastal program, and the 1986 Coastal Protection Initiative, ensuring long-term coastal stewardship. Her leadership saved iconic places like Devil's Slide, Montara Mountain, McNeese Ranch, and Pillar Point Marsh. And her national impact includes co-founding the Yosemite Fund, now a major conservancy supporting restoration and education in Yosemite National Park. On September 4th, 2025, MidPen honored Lenny's legacy by dedicating the Future Loop Trail at Miramonte's Ridge Open Space Preserve as the Lenny Roberts Trail. This new trail will stand as a lasting testament to her vision, passion, and decades of leadership that have now protected the region's natural beauty for generations to come. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert Brownstone, along with my fellow councilmembers of the city of Half Moon Bay, do hereby honor and recognize Lenny Roberts for a lifetime of extraordinary achievement that have forever protected, preserved, and enriched the natural landscapes and communities of our region. Please join me in a standing ovation for Lenny Roberts. Thank you. Thank you, Lenny. Should I read the proclamation? Okay, I'm gonna bring over this proclamation to Lenny. And then, is Lenny gonna say a few words? And we have some photos, some comments from council as well. Okay, let me deliver this first.
Is this on? Thank you so much, Mayor Brownstone and councilmembers and city staff. For those of you who don't know about Greenfoothills, we've been around since 1962. And we work to protect local nature and farmland to ensure a healthy environment for everyone. We do this through advocacy, education, and grassroots action focused on San Mateo County, Santa Clara County, and San Benito County. We have also worked over many years in support of housing for farmworkers, as well as affordable housing that's located in downtown areas and along transportation corridors. Some of my Greenfoothills colleagues are here. Our esteemed Executive Director Julie Hutchinson, Alice Kaufman, Policy and Advocacy Director, and Jenny Green, Marketing Director, who's getting pictures of all of this. But I just, I think some people here might be interested in what might have happened to the coast. Back in the 1960s, San Mateo County leaders and Half Moon Bay leaders had grandiose plans for sprawling coastal development. The county's master plan projected that by 1990, there would be 100,000 people living in the Half Moon Bay area and another 100,000 on the south coast. Had these plans come to fruition along the eastern foothills of Half Moon Bay, we would have a six-lane freeway that was the Caltrans had planned to construct from San Francisco all the way down to Monterey. Highway one would become a six-lane freeway. Edgewood Road, which now terminates at Canyada Road in the San Francisco Peninsula watershed, was slated to be extended up over Skyline and join Highway one just below the historic Johnston House, just south of Half Moon Bay. And a coastside satellite county government center was going to be located at that intersection to provide services to this huge population on the coast. So what happened to those original plans was due to persistence and grit, as well as a lot of luck and help from friends and allies, because what you see today is far different. Greenfoothills and our environmental allies on the coast had to rebuff the paper overs many times. In 1978, 1979, and 1982, we challenged approvals for development of the 868-acre Johnston Ranch, which is formerly was called Casinelli Ranch, which surrounds the Johnston House. In 1996, we went on the offensive and qualified the first ever countywide citizens initiative, Measure A for the ballot, which was approved by the voters by a 63% yes vote. Next year is the 40th anniversary of Measure A. So I want to give a special shout out to Peninsula Open Space Trust, which has acquired large areas of land outside the urban boundary of Half Moon Bay, as well as the Wave Crest area, all of which were planned for development by large landowners. So as a result, much of the prime agricultural land that which we all depend upon for local fresh produce is permanently protected. We also support green building, safe, affordable housing for farmworkers and people from all ethnic, social, and economic backgrounds in urban downtowns and along transit corridors. I'd just like to end with a quote from Jane Goodall, who's a huge heroine of mine, who famously said, "You cannot get through a single day without having an impact on the world around you. What you do makes a difference, and you have to decide what kind of difference you want to make." I thank you for this proclamation in the spirit of Jane Goodall, who offers hope in these dark and challenging times. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenny. Take some comments from council.
Yeah, I just want to say that it has taken a lot of people to accomplish everything that Greenfoothills has done and everything that you have personally done. But if Lenny hadn't been there, a lot of it may not have happened. You, you, you had the grit, you had the perseverance, you had the intelligence, and you did the hard work, and God bless you. I am so grateful to be living in a place that you have made so wonderful. Thank you, Lenny.
Thank you.
I would just echo that. And for everyone listening, and hopefully maybe reading in the newspaper soon, the community that we love, the coast side that we love, you know, the continuation of the farmland, the open spaces, the scenic views, when we're only, you know, a dozen miles away from the peninsula and Silicon Valley, you can thank Lenny Roberts, you know, for this. And I've lived here 36 years. I met her soon after moving here. And I can't think of anyone who has shaped my thinking about environmental protection, about governing, about collaborating with others. And I know you've influenced many, many, many people and generations to come. So your contribution is enormous and unmatched. And count me very grateful and my community grateful. Thank you so much.
Hello, Lenny. I remember 20-some-odd years ago when I was Public Works Director, and your name first came up. It's, who's this Lenny Roberts? And who's, you know, we're, many times as somebody that like, we like to build things as public work directors, but we want to build them right. And that's when I first started coming across your name, your interests, and making sure, holding us accountable to make sure we did do something right. I concur what's already been said about you. You've been amazing to me over the years. You're many times, many things like a fine wine. You get better as you've aged. And I thank you, and I know the coast thanks you for all the work you've been doing.
Lenny, I've, I've heard about you for many years, and I've been on the Planning Commission for 14 years. And I've been involved with this, the city personally, and now on, you know, with council. Like I said, like everybody else has said here now, we drive by, but we don't know why. That property is not built, and that field is green, and that preserved area is there. And that's what people always talk about when they, "I love Half Moon Bay." So you, you've created and you preserve the love in Half Moon Bay because your vision was there and very clear. And because of you back in the day and staying focused on this, we are now enjoying it, and the new people coming in don't know who you are. But the people around that have been here for a while do know who you are. I've known your name. I've never, I think I maybe met you a long time ago. But this, they need to know that you are the one that preserved what we, why we, why we live here and why we love Half Moon Bay. You have done that. And I want to say thank you, and I think everybody else should say thank you too, is what we're doing right now. Thank you.
I'll just add real quickly, Lenny, I first met you when I was first running for city council and was seeking the endorsement of Greenfoothills and spent some time with you. And I think the greatest blessing that you bestow on this region is you stand up for people who don't often have a voice, people who are invisible. And they may have concerns, but they really don't have a voice. So thank you for giving voice to folks who may not have agency and a voice. And frankly, thank you for defending Mother Nature herself. So thank you. Appreciate it, Lenny. Well, it's hard to follow that, so. Any particular upcoming events that I can't think of off the top of my head? Okay, mostly coming up in December. We don't have a report out from recent closed session this evening. Updates to council?
Mr. Mayor, we have one planned update for tonight, and Todd Seeley will help us understand why we've got some additional folks in the room tonight.
I drew the lucky straw following up that lovely presentation. Mayor Brownstone, Vice Mayor Ruddick, councilmembers, it's an honor to be here with you tonight. My name is Todd Seeley, and I'm the interim Public Works Director. And I'm here to talk to you this evening about CERT. One of the councilmembers sitting up on the dais actually is wearing his CERT vest tonight, so he is highly visible and ready to, ready to go. Let's see here. Excuse me, I'm just gonna. Ah, there we go. All right, so we're here to talk about the Coastside CERT Fall 2025 Basic Training. The training took place between the 29th of October and the 15th of November. We, the course finished and graduated on Saturday, November 15th. There were 37 graduates from this course, including Councilmember Johnson, Leslie Laco, who is the Community Development Director, and myself. 99 CERTs trained this year, including 30 through the Spanish-speaking cohort, which is very important to this community. Coastside CERT currently has 542 trained CERTs, 179 ham radio operators, and that's across 32 neighborhoods from Montero to Tanitas Creek. It's also important to point out that many other current city leaders and staff have attended the program at one point or another, including Mayor Brownstone, Vice Mayor Ruddick, Councilmember Penrose, City Manager Chittister, Jalisa Costa, Joe Butcher, and Matt Nichols. And I believe Councilmember Nagangast is enrolled for the CERT training in the spring. So we are gonna have even more smiling faces when we're done with all that. Go back real quick, just to give you guys an idea kind of what the training entailed. The first training was about surviving local hazards, fire in the tunnel, tsunami, flooding down power lines, earthquake, wildfire evacuations, a subject we'll be touching on later, and extended power outages. I'm, all realistic possibilities for us here on the coast side. Something that we take seriously in our preparations is city staff making sure that we're ready to deal with all of this stuff. The second class was involved disaster preparedness, CERT organization, and intro to radio communications. I had to dust off my old call sign from a previous job. It was quite fun. I enjoyed it. We also, after that, we went into the third class, Disaster Medical Operations Triage, and another class on disaster medical operations, along with fire safety and utility controls, and a little bit of light search and rescue. Fire safety and utility control is particularly important for the homeowners in town in the event of a disaster, knowing how to turn off the main switch on your, on your fuse box, how to turn off your water, and how to turn off your gas if there's no first responders available to come help you out. It's helpful to know how to do these things yourself. The fourth class was disaster psychology, mental health, terrorism, and stop the bleed. And finally, on Saturday, we did a little bit of hands-on skills training and then a full-on disaster simulation training. It was quite entertaining and fun to participate in. We did all this at Fire Station 40, except for the first session, which was over Zoom. But a great facility down there, a great resource that we have out here on the coast side. There's a few pictures from the final training exercise, where the cadets were lined up in, in, in the fire station itself, doing a little bit of field work in the second. And this is an extensive list of the class graduates from this course. I'm not gonna read through all of those. I know we have a long night tonight. But it is important to point out that of those 37 graduates, five of them were actually high schoolers. So five of them were from Half Moon Bay High, Go Cougars. And it was nice to be able to see them in their training and feeling like they're being part of the community even at that younger age. Finally, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to recognize some of the Coastside CERT leadership team. I have pretty good relationships with some of these people that I've developed in my professional capacity. But going through the program gave me a much better look at to what these folks are actually doing for the community. And it is truly a value add to what we have going out here on the coast side. I mean, we really are an island. There's one way in, one way into the east, and there's one way out of here going north. And that's really it. So in the event of an emergency, this training that these wonderful folks over here put on is super beneficial to the community. I'd like to recognize Cynthia Sherrill. She is the program coordinator. Retired Fire Chief Dave Cosgrave. He's the program manager and lead instructor. Jennifer Goshorn is the Frenchman's Creek Neighborhood Co-lead. Is April here? No, April Larson and Matt Linton unfortunately, and Scott Pine is unfortunately not able to make it tonight. But they were also vital parts of this training. And finally, Rebecca Simmons, who is the Allstate Lorraine Co-lead. Again, I just wanted to take this opportunity to express my gratitude for these folks over here for putting this course on. It truly is an amazing thing for this community. Obviously, in my role, should there be an emergency, I would be assigned somewhere else, and I wouldn't be able to help out in the neighborhoods. But it is, it is very comforting knowing that there's this many folks that can be deployed on short notice out in the neighborhoods to take care of stuff and to make sure that they're helping the city, supplementing our work that we're trying to do, and not causing any further harm. So thank you all, and thank you guys for coming out tonight. And if anyone would like to, is interested in registering for the spring course, wwwcoastsidecert.com. Thank you all.
Thank you, and we'll probably talk a...
Todd, there was that one, thank you for that, and thank you for all the CERT people. You guys were wonderful. It was great fun. Cynthia was awesome, and the whole team was great. I'm gonna brush up on my radio stuff, but I gotta get, Dave's getting me radios. I paid him for it, and he's ordering me some radios. But that was one thing, the only thing I didn't get, that I really, being a pilot, I'm good with radios because you're talking to the tower. That's not the issue. It was just how it's formulated, and that's something that I want to work on a little bit. But there is going to be a training, and I remember, right, Dave, you can correct me, but there's, they call it the something, the Shakeout. And they normally do it in October, but we do it in September, the third week of September, if my memory serves me right, right, on a Saturday, something like that. Okay, so my memory's good. So that was something that I think is great, and that's where they're honing in of the skills will become better, because this is basically, I think it was 25 hours or 24 hours of training. And people are getting, they're getting the, you know, the function and the, and what's, what's going on, but they're not 100%. So I think the training, when we do the Shakeout, when we actually apply it again, will be a great training. And then also for the people here on the council and people at home, they do have, if I'm not mistaken, on the website, you can do recertification, so you can actually brush up your skills. Now, when they talked about it, and David brought this up many times, Cynthia also, you need to be prepared for three days or three weeks, because we are, as Todd said, in an island. When this does happen, the roads will close, just saying it could, and we're gonna be stuck in one area, and we won't have any help. be stuck in one area, and we won't have any help for a certain period of time, and we don't know. So, being certified, or at least educated, on how to, to prep your house, take care of your family, and take care of your neighbors is a big thing, and that's what CERT is. And radioing into our sheriff's station is all part of that process. Then it goes to where Dave works now locally, which is one of the meetings that I go to and, and, in, off of Whipple there. All the data that we gather from our little town goes to where the big hub over there for DEM. And so, that's the whole process, the big picture's there. The other thing that we got, that I thought was kind of cool, and it was on Sunday, signs of opioid overdose. And then a gal came in that gave us boxes of this stuff. It's called Narcan, which I had no clue about. But it was kind of cool because she's showing us if you saw something like this, you are now, you know, able to submit this product up the, you know, in the nose, wait a couple minutes, might have to do two. That was, to me, was kind of interesting. But that was another little bonus that I thought was kind of cool. I had no clue that was going to be there. So, all in all, I want to say, every minute that I was there, every day that I went, I was looking forward to it. And I learned a lot. And I think everybody in this city should consider sending one family member there to learn. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So, as people from the public who are watching this later or listening, if you go on to Half Moon Bay CERT website, you can see who's in your neighborhood. I mean, we cover 32 neighborhoods. I didn't know there are that many neighborhoods in Half Moon Bay. We're not talking five districts. We're talking neighborhood by neighborhood, blocks by blocks. And there's neighborhood leaders. And in an emergency, as we know, just even from flooding, high winds, you know, power can go out. And the folks who will have the most reliable communications are those folks, 179 people, which is a lot, spread across the city with these portable ham radios. And the ham radios will still work because we have a huge antenna on top of a mountain here that's powered with emergency power as well. And in an emergency, whether it's light outside or dark, there will be CERT people in your neighborhood. And if someone is hurt, or injured, or needs help, it's that person with the walkie-talkie who can direct you to where a staging ground is, where an ambulance or a helicopter can come. And they'll be able to go into houses if there's an earthquake and see if everyone's okay, walk the neighborhoods. So, it's an incredible resource that we've developed, not overnight, but over years, having so many people. So, yeah, take a minute, find out who's in your neighborhood, and become part of the, you know, great if you can sign up for training, but get to know your CERT folks so they can also give you guidance. So, just wanted to add that. Thanks. All right. So, next we have public forum. I saw that, well, two speakers, two people already gave, who gave us cards for our 7:30 session. So, they'll be waiting till then. That's Amber Stowe and Sarah Sullivan. But I have three folks in the room, and then one online. And just as a reminder, the way public forum works is to bring up any topic that's not on the agenda. So, you'll, public will have time to comment on the agenda items when we get to those later. But anything else on your mind? That's public forum time. And we ask that people take, you'll have three minutes. You'll hear two tones, one at the two-minute and 30-second mark, meaning you have 30 seconds left, and then a final tone, meaning your time is up. We ask that people not applaud after speakers speak because it makes it more comfortable for folks, especially if they're speaking for the first time, to take the stress out. We want people, as many people participating as possible. So, how about our first speaker, who will actually speak from the dais, is Councilmember Penrose?
I'm speaking tonight to apologize for comments made at a council meeting a few weeks back. I spoke about what appeared to me to be an empty storefront on Main Street, the law office of Robin Dunlap. My statements were based solely on my own opinion. It seems that Ms. Dunlap felt my remarks to be malicious and feared for her safety. I certainly never meant any harm to Ms. Dunlap or to her business, and I apologize for causing her concern. Furthermore, I welcome Ms. Dunlap's input on matters concerning our downtown and the proposed vitality ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Penrose. Our next speaker is Joaquin Jimenez, to be followed by Joe Farrell.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city staff, members of the public. It was just an honor to be here, you know, present when Lenny received the recognition for the work that she's done. You know, Lenny Roberts is an amazing person. I met her a few years back. After meeting her here, at a, during a, after a city council meeting, there was a, we were presenting about the development of a tomb speech. And after that, it was for me finding out about the work that she's done. You know, about how she protected the coast from becoming an overgrown community, protected the coast from having the six-lane freeway from San Francisco to Monterey. That was just amazing. I had the opportunity to be with her during several, I guess, events, when the tunnel on Devil's Slide was named, when it was open, during other events, celebrations with Midpen and Green, Greenfoot Hills. And the more, you know, I know about Lenny, you know, the more interesting, you know, it becomes for me to learn more about the coast, and to protect the coast, to protect our heritage, and especially about farming and ranching. You know, Lenny, a few years back, she's been very instrumental on the work that we are trying to do about our mission, you know, with the organization Ranches San Benito. And a few years back, you know, she shared with me a vision, you know, that she has. And I'm not going to share with you the vision. It's, it's right here. But I, you know, my, my plan is to get the vision done. You know, something that she shared with me very dearly, and I keep that with me. And a lot of the work that I do, you know, I keep that vision. And everything comes to be about, you know, farming and our community. Conversations that we had about the, the outdoor kitchen that the Johnson house used to have, you know, back in, in the 1850s, 1860s, 1870s. You know, a lot, a lot of history. She's, I love history, and she's a historian, and I love the work she's done, and I have great, great admiration for her work and for everything she's done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Joaquin. Our next speaker is Joe Farrell, to be followed by Sid Young, who's online. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm, I'm Joe Farrell, and lived at 2805 Alameda Avenue in Miramar for more than 30 years. I've been told that fixing Pullman Ditch is a priority number one for council members. If that is the case, we're asking that Pullman Ditch be an agenda item on the city council meetings until the flooding, dumping, and polluted wastewater under private property is eliminated and the bypass completed. That said, I'm speaking tonight to set the record straight about how we got to the Pullman Ditch flooding crisis you saw happen again Monday morning, November 17th. For decades, the city allowed two things to happen that directly created the flooding we are dealing with today. First, in the early 1990s, and then again in 2008, Caltrans redirected Highway 1 stormwater into the Pullman Ditch without obtaining easements from private properties being used as the outfall. Before that work, the water was split, it split its path and ran across farmland, that is now the Stalotsky subdivision, and the Pullman Ditch. After 2008, construction by Caltrans tightened the bend and concentrated all that flow into Pullman Ditch. The ditch began cutting downward and sideways. Every storm since then has carved it deeper and sent more water onto our homes that can't absorb it. The residents and water engineers told the city council this would happen in 2008. The city approved that work anyway. Second, during the same period, the city approved multiple new homes to be built close to the ditch, including several that were built below the grade of the street and below the top of the bank. That is a direct conflict with local coastal program policy 7-55. These approvals place residents directly in harm's way, and the damage we see today is the result of that. On top of this, Rocket Farms continues sending wastewater to the same plant without a valid non-domestic discharge permit, and their ponds remain unverified. The October sample from the Pullman Ditch showed elevated nitrogen and phosphorus, even though the sample was not the first flush. That tells us that water is moving through the ditch during storms is polluted, and that pollution is entering the ocean and our neighborhood. The Water Board has been investigating this since July, and the city has a legal responsibility under the basin plan and the municipal stormwater permit to make sure that polluted water does not leave that site. All of this adds up to one simple fact. The city has a duty to protect public health, safety, and welfare, and for decades, it has not meant that duty. The Coastal Commission expects the city to build the bypass. The public expects it as well. The city created this problem through past approvals and non-action. It falls on the city to fix it now. Residents can't wait another storm season. You've got to move forward with the bypass and take immediate steps to reduce the flow in Pullman Ditch before someone is seriously harmed. If the city delays again, more homes will flood, more land will erode, and more polluted water will reach the ocean. This is not simply enough attention, because not enough attention and work directed by the city on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Our next speaker online is Sid Young.
Hi, just want to make sure you can hear me.
We can hear you. Thanks.
Okay, good. Today, I went to the Board of Supervisors meeting virtually via Zoom, and I was appalled to hear that they, Dave Canapo was entertaining, giving, I think it was $30,000 for a study to see if they could consolidate the fire groups in San Mateo County under a local 2400. Now, I don't know how many of you remember the signs that were on the coast side, Keep Cal Fire, but I was one of the 10 people that were gathering signatures to make sure that we were able to keep our local coastside fire protection district with our contract with, with Cal Fire. And now, it looks like they are trying to get another turf war going between the unions. So, I just want to let everybody know that we have saved so much money by having Cal Fire. We paid for the whole entire El Granada Fire Station without having to put out a bond. And now, we're planning to get the, the new Moss Beach Fire Station also without having to pay, you know, saddle the citizens with a bond. So, if anybody approaches the city council members to try to get the old union back, please tell them we're happy with Cal Fire. I certainly am. And I don't want to see that turf war start up again. But they go all the way, LAFCO, when they had their municipal services review, asked them to extend their sphere of influence all the way up to Devil's Slide because they do a lot of cliff rescue. I don't think that other union does any kind of cliff rescues on the coast. So, they were saying, oh, we'll do more training and this and that. I don't buy it for a minute. So, thank you very much. Just be aware. And I think everybody on the coast side's pretty happy with Cal Fire. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sid. That concludes our public forum. Public forum is now closed. Thank you very much. We'll now move on to our consent calendar. Did anyone on council have an item to remove here now? Nope. Okay. For sake of, say, moving things along, how about if I make the motion on the consent calendar, items 8A, wave reading of resolutions and ordinances, item 8B, approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2025 special meeting, item AC, approve the minutes of the November 4th, 2025 regular meeting, item 8D, accept the warrants for the month of October 2025, item 8E, approve the opportunity center of the coastside asset disposal, item 8F, approve mitigation monitoring reporting program for the six-cycle housing element, mitigate a negative declaration, and item G, adopt the 2025 additions of the California Building Standards Code, second reading. Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in, well, they'll take a roll call on all those consignments there.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Yes.
Councilmember Penrose?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ruddick?
Yes.
Mayor Brownstone?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now take a five-minute break before we get on to our ordinances. And, nope, 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 nope. Sorry, never mind. Yeah, got to adjourn this session. Any commission committee updates?
None.
Any future discussion items? Any city council reports? Sorry about that. Okay, we've adjourned this part of our evening. We'll take a five-minute break so we can let our planning commissioners get settled, and then we will continue into the afternoon session. and then we will continue into the afternoon session. Afternoon session. And we'll now have a, we'll have a roll call again, I believe, according to the agenda. Okay.
All right, I'm going to start with council. Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Nagangast?
Here.
Councilmember Penrose?
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruddock?
Here.
Mayor Brownstone?
Here.
Commissioner Del Negro?
President.
Commissioner Rems?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
And Chair Ruddock?
I'm here.
We have a quorum.
Great. Thanks, everyone. Welcome Planning Commission. It's been a while since we had a joint session, so nice to see folks again. We're going to start with, this is a special study session, and in a moment, staff will tell you about what's going on and how much we'll be covering today. And again, this is just the beginning to talk about fire hazards and our safety element. This will be a continuing conversation. We'll start with item two A, local responsibility and area fire hazard severity zone maps. And we'll receive a report about fire hazard severity zone maps and implications to the Half Moon Bay community associated with the maps and defensible space zones.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Ruddock, council members, Commissioner Ruddock, and Planning Commission members. My name is Todd Seeley. I'm the interim Public Works Director, and it is a pleasure to be here with you this evening. This evening, I'm joined by Cal Fire Unit Chief Jed Wilson. He is here to support the Public Works Department and kind of give us a little bit of information on the fire mapping and how it could potentially affect the city. Let's see here, is this? Sorry about that, running through a little bit of technical issues. There we go. Our recommendation for you this evening is to receive a report about fire hazard severity zone maps and the implications to the Half Moon Bay community associated with the maps and the defensible space zones. Little bit of background on this item. On February 24th, 2025, the Coastside Fire Protection District received the updated fire hazard severity zone maps from the state fire marshal's office. I've provided all of you here this evening with a copy of the current map, and there are copies available for the public at the front counter as well, if anyone's interested in taking a look at them. These maps were developed pursuant to Government Code Section 51178, which mandates the identification and classification of areas in California based on their relative fire hazard severity. Fire hazard severity zone maps arose from major destructive fires, prompting the recognition of these areas and strategies to reduce wildfire risks. The fire hazard severity zone maps evaluate hazard, not risk, so that's an important thing to take into consideration when we're looking at this. Hazard is based on the physical conditions that create a likelihood and an expected fire behavior over a 30- to 50-year period without considering mitigation efforts. Risk is the potential damage a fire can cause the area under existing conditions, not accounting for any modifications such as fuel reduction projects or defensible space. Some discussion we'd like to have this evening is, since the publication of these maps, there has been much discussion about them amongst both city staff and concerned members of the coastside community. The maps are, in addition to Assembly Bill 3074, which mandated the creation of ember resistant zones, which are commonly referred to as Zone Zero. We hear that term bandied about quite a bit. There's a lot of concern that, in my capacity that I've heard from residents of this town, like, what are we going to do about Zone Zero? And how do we protect ourselves? Or what are the, what are the long-term implications for my, my property, for my community, stuff like that? So the, the maps are designed to reduce risk to homes and structures, and its implementation could lead to multiple issues for residents of the coastside. We're not 100% sure when exactly implementation is going to take place. Chief Wilson can touch on that in, in the Q and A section of this, but we expect it, or he expects it to take place maybe by the end of this year, early next year, sometime around then. So the implementation is coming soon, sooner rather than later, possibly within the next eight weeks or so. And as I, as we just mentioned, implementation enforcement has been a moving target. Potential liabilities, this is probably where city staff and specifically Public Works are going to have the most input. Downtown being a potential liability, part of the downtown core falls in the very high severity area. Tree removals and building modifications such as awnings or any structures attached to the side of the building may be necessary for compliance. Insurance, both city facilities and private properties could be affected by the cancellation of insurance policies. I know firsthand that there's a building that you can throw a rock from City Hall and hit, and their insurance policy was almost canceled on them because of a city tree that was growing too close to their building, right? So that's literally right in our backyard. I mean, it's right around the corner from City Hall, and this is before these maps have even been adopted formally. So it's a huge liability for us that we need to seriously consider and plan for moving forward in, in the downtown core and in, in the rest of town as well, too. Staff have heard of some additional requirements being proposed on property owners and other policies being canceled. There is a resource, California Fair Plan Property Insurance, does offer insurance policies to property owners when traditional insurance companies will not. I've done a little bit of a, of a quick glance at it. It seems like it's a legitimate organization, but I also have some documentation that I pulled up that those rates are also rising as well. So they do offer these plans, but they realize that it's, it's cost prohibitive, and they're passing those costs along to, to the end user of those policies. Perhaps the biggest potential liability for the city would be any of the urban forests that fall in the high, the, the very high fire zone areas. Frenchman's Creek Park, Carter Park, the Corporation Yard even, we have several city-owned parcels in the Roosevelt neighborhood, and portions of Main Street fall in the very high severity zone. Magnolia Park, where we have another large grove of eucalyptus trees that's right outside of the high severity zone and in the high zone. Since we're not sure what enforcement and implementation is going to look like, we have to plan for all of these potential areas. I think between, it's around 250 trees is our best estimate. Yes, that's, it's a lot of trees. Conservatively, $10,000 a tree for removal. In Frenchman's Creek, because of the topography over there and the fact that we would have to do most of the work with cranes, that's probably $30,000 a tree, just to get it all out of there, to dispose of it properly, to get everything done above board. And I think there's about 70 trees in the Frenchman's Creek Park area at $30,000 a pop. It's a, it's a very daunting number. We do have some help with this in that Governor Newsom did declare a state of emergency recently. The state of emergency only really impacts the environmental entitlements that we would need to get to remove trees if we have to go that route. It's a first step, for sure, but with that, even with reducing those entitlement costs, there's still currently no grant funding really available to do any large-scale removal of any trees or anything like that. So with that, I did a really brief PowerPoint, because I think for, for this presentation that the Q and A is more, more appropriate, especially since we have Chief Wilson here with us to answer a lot of the, the technical questions that city staff just aren't trained to answer. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Mayor Brownstone and see if there's any questions.
Before I get to the public, questions from council.
When you talk about trees, all trees, particular trees?
Excuse me, well, the question-
All, every, every kind of tree, a eucalyptus tree, a maitland tree, a, an oak tree?
That is correct. And when I'm talking about trees, I'm just talking about in the specific areas where we have large urban forests that fall in the very high fire zones.
So in the very high fire zone, if there's a single tree, is that a risk?
Probably not. That would probably be a, more of a technical question. A single tree, probably not. I think the, the real issues they're worried about, trees in, in a forested type area that could, you know, combust and spread, spread fire and ember more quickly than a singular tree could.
I, I have several questions. I didn't know how you want, you want the format to-
We can, yeah, why don't you-
Just go ahead.
To your questions, yeah.
Okay. Because, you know, and I, mapping to me are lines on a piece of paper, and it's always interesting why somebody's red, why somebody's brown, why somebody's yellow. Because if I go to my house, it's yellow, but I go next door and it's not, you know? And I, these are the kind of questions that just come up, why my house and not my neighbor's house? When we're exact same block, exact same everything, you know? I know you were trying to explain it's a hazard, but why isn't my... A simple question, why isn't my neighbor's house a hazard?
Yeah, so for the mapping, for the very high, high and moderate?
Could you get close to the mic so it could be picked up?
So they take in account fuels, topography, weather. And historically, those maps that were in the SRA, and there was only in very high previously, they were not as refined as they are now. So they can take those models, and they looked and added ember cast as well into these modeling. So we all experienced some form. The Palisades are Eaton Fire in January last year. That had a lot to do with ember cast. That was ignition from structure to structure. That was no longer a wildland fire. It became a conflagration. So they take those into account. So while your neighbor's house next door might seem exactly the same, there's one of those contributing factors that changes the model to have it a larger hazard than your house. And you'll notice that the maps are not parcel-based. They are actually congruent with that modeling. So if there is a parcel that is split within the city or Coastside Fire Protection District, that the higher value is going to be associated with that parcel. So we're eliminating that hazard as much as possible. So the ordinance is written in that form.
It's still hard to explain that to somebody, why my house, not your house?
I understand. When you look at something a computer model spits out, and you're trying to figure out those differences. The State Fire Marshal who created these maps, I know that they went through very rigorous for the SRA, which were adopted the year before. We went through very rigorous public meetings over and over, and they kept refining the model, and that same model was used for the LRA. So it was kind of validated prior.
Okay. And unfortunately, a representative from the insurance industry couldn't be here tonight. But I assume they're the ones that insure against risk? Is that what the insurance? So, and their maps, and I've been told, can be totally different than this map. That risk can be different than hazard.
Councilmember Nagin asked, and fortunately, we were not able to get anyone from the insurance industry. They, we reached out to seven different sources, including some that were nonprofit-based that do this kind of work, and none of them expressing the interest in coming to speak with us tonight. I think it's obviously a hot topic issue, and they didn't want to be on public record probably talking about it. So unfortunately, we weren't able to get anyone here. But we did, I want to assure you that we did try to get someone from the insurance industry here to speak to your questions.
Yeah, I know.
And I will just corroborate what you're saying. We've heard from a lot of reputable sources that the risk maps can be very different than these, much more stringent than these as well. So I think there's a lot still to be learned on that, and we'll continue to pursue that and hopefully be able to schedule something in the future, so our residents can get a better understanding of how that works.
Right. And then, just another quick, so, well, let's say I was going to get a building permit. Will there be different standards in very high severity versus high versus moderate? So I'll go back to my neighbor's house. So if we both do the same thing for a building permit, will his permit have different conditions related to fire because he's in a high or I'm, you know, a different zone than I'm in?
Yes. So for the three, sorry, for the, really close here. For the three zones, so for very high in the LRA, there is defensible space inspections are required by the agency. So Coastside Fire Protection District, starting next year, will start enforcing, and I shouldn't say enforcing, they will start inspecting homes in the very high. And for the city of Half Moon Bay, you have 1,684 homes that we need to inspect. We'll probably do that over the course of a three-year period and phase that in, because we need to add additional staffing to be able to support those inspections. Hazard disclosures will be for the very high, which is when you go to sell your home. It's currently required in the SRA. An inspection is done to show that it is fire-safe or not, and that way, that is disclosed at purchase. The subdivision review, which Planning could talk more specifically on, that is overlaid in the very high. SEQA is required within the very high for projects. The safety element is required in very high. The California Fire Safe Regulations are applied in very high, and Chapter 7A of the Building Code is applied for very high. So a lot of stuff is happening in the very high. So if you're very high, all those things apply to you. We go to your neighbor next door, and we're going to say that he's or she is sitting in the high. They have a disclosure requirement if they go to sell their home, and Chapter 7A of the Building Code applies. They are not getting an inspection. We hope that in Coastside Fire Protection District, as our inspections become more robust, we're going to try to not just go to the very high, but to high and moderate homes. I think we have 3,813 homes within, or inspectable properties in the city of Half Moon Bay to make sure that everybody is being afforded the opportunity to be fire-safe. And then if you're in moderate, you do not have any requirements put on you.
That was a lot to digest, and hearing a lot of this right now-
To this be blunt, very high, you're going to be more stringent. High will be less stringent. Moderate is less.
And when you said, you inspect if we don't do anything, is there penalties? Or it just-
There could be, but penalties usually don't work, right? So hopefully, we do have a weed abatement program that we do in Coastside Fire Protection District to mitigate weeds on vacant lots, but these are occupied structures. We will keep coming out and inspecting and hopefully gain compliance. I personally, as the Fire Chief of Coastside, don't feel that a heavy hammer is going to solve the problem. You might get a little bit more fees with money.
Okay. That's enough for right now, but-
Excuse me, Councilmember Nagin asked, if I can just follow up on that. I just wanted to add one more thing. This is a kind of a sheet that's pulled from the CERT website. So again, we're talking about CERT and the good things they do to the community. They have some compliance timelines on there. January 1 of 2026 is when Zone Zero is going to be required for all new constructions. And '26 to '28 is when they're going to start doing their stuff on existing homes and working on compliance with that. So again, just another plug for CERT. They're doing good things for the community and publishing all this information on their website.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think this is great. Instead of penalizing folks, we're trying to incentivize behavior that will save entire neighborhoods. Because if you're, if the moderate home is next to the high-risk, and that high-risk goes up, and you've got embers going everywhere, you're going to be caught up easily in a windstorm as anyone else. And I think that, we know that insurance companies were flying drones and taking pictures of people's houses and adjusting their rates again. And frankly, often, it is insurance companies, which incentivize behaviors. But it's also very controversial. We know the Attorney General is looking at insurance rates, et cetera. I mean, there's a lot of pieces to this. But, you know, there's been a lot of information out there about how to harden your home for quite a bit. And, you know, some of us take it more serious than others. You know, you go into the areas and other parts north here, you know, go into communities that had big fires. Wow, you drive through them now, people have cut down trees near there. You could really see where they've made a difference. So I think having the inspections will actually be really helpful, and people will be much more proactive once they really know what to do and how to do it. So I see this as good. It's overwhelming right now to figure this all out, but I think it's headed in a really good direction that we're getting the right experts in place to really explain to people. And as you start doing inspections, it'll be proactive. People aren't going to wait two years to get their, you know, they're going to be learning from it, passing the good word and the CERT informations. I think that's terrific. Any other questions or comments at this point from staff before I take public questions and comments?
Good.
Oh, sorry, Planning Commission. Sorry about that. What was I thinking? Sorry, Steve.
Yeah, don't forget us. Thank you for having us. Chief Wilson, do I understand the difference between risk and hazard correctly? I'm thinking that you could have an open stretch of grassland with no structures on it that maybe because-
Steve, I'm not sure your mics work. I can hear you because I'm close, but that sounds good. Maybe get a little closer, move it up to your mouth a little more.
Pretty close. Is this any better?
Yes.
Thank you. I was, I started to say, if, I can, am I correct that hypothetical open stretch of grassland might be high hazard zone but low risk because there's no structures to be at risk on it?
Correct.
And secondly, is the State Fire Marshal's data transparent? Like, if I knew what I was doing, could I go in and see the data that these rankings are based on and play around with the historic wind velocities for a neighborhood and see how that changed?
I believe the data is available. I don't believe you could play with the data, though, to adjust it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to follow up. Thank you for the presentation. It is a hot topic. I can tell you're a dad. The risk maps, can we, does the, you know, State Fire Marshal have the risk maps from the insurance industry? Because hazards are nice, but I've worked with the insurance industry on maps, and their maps are very different in how they model risk. Do we have visibility to those as a state?
The hazard and risk maps are separate. We do not take insurance risk maps into the hazard map, and it should not go vice versa.
Can we get access to the insurance industry's risk maps? Because as homeowners, like, that's what we care-
I believe that they're proprietary to the carrier.
Okay.
Yes.
So does the state have a risk model that be as homeowners can take into account?
No, these hazard maps are what we utilize.
Okay. If we got rid of all of the overground power lines, how would that affect the red and the orange on this? Because what we're talking about is forcing homeowners to remove stuff around their homes, remove trees. But the risk is, like, the cost is pushed on to the community. How does removing overhead power lines affect these risk maps? And is there a way for us to remove that, like, model, to Steve's point, to see how that would impact the hazard to our community?
So the power lines are not included in the maps because they're not utilized. It's not creating ignition sources. It's as if an ignition source started anywhere, how that fire could be. So power lines are not a delineating factor in the mapping.
But if it's a major risk factor for fire-
We're confusing, there's a hazard map-
Mm-hmm, okay.
With the State Fire Marshal, you're talking more risk. But one thing to loop back on is there's been talk about cutting down trees, and trees keep being brought up. This is defensible space around a structure. So Zone Zero, which should be adopted before December 31st of 2025 by the Board of Forestry, once those rules are out, they'll have a three-year implementation for anything existing. And anything new will need to adhere to those. Then you have a 30-foot, and it, you know, Zone One, Zone Two, all the way out to 100 feet. That's where you should be doing reduction. It doesn't mean that you have to cut down every single tree and have short grass. You need to be creating a reduction zone. So if your home catches fire, it doesn't go out? Or if a fire comes in, it doesn't go to your home?
I was going to follow up on that point because I'm under the impression that there might be some wiggle room for Zone Zero and the coastal zone because it's not necessarily, doesn't take into account the types of habitat we have here, the ability to catch and slow embers, to stop winds. In some cases, certain types of greenery, shrubbery trees actually act as a mitigant to fire. So are we going to be able to look at how the coastal zone might be different up here versus down in San Diego where everything- Proactive measures besides, like, water suppression systems, aerial suppression systems? If those were implemented, would that reduce the hazard in the hazard maps? Like, if we had community swimming pools or water storage tanks that could aerosolize water, are those things that would remove our hazards? Are there things besides just removing fuel that we can do?
Those items that you speak of are not part of the hazard map-
Okay.
-creation. So that's technology that is being, I'm trying to think of the right word. It's not realized yet in its validity-
Okay.
-fully, so.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions following up on Council- Do you know how often they're going to be updated at this point?
I do not, but it's been, seems like about a five-to-eight-year cycle from, historically.
I see. And you're saying this model for the very high fire hazard area is based on a computer model or actual observations of what the vegetation is like and what the terrain is like, and so on and so forth?
Both factors. It takes into the fuel, weather, and topography, historical data based on the fuels that were there, any past fire history, and then any critical weather that has been forecasted within those zones. It combines all of those, and then added in ember casts as well and this modeling from previous years.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
If would large-scale agricultural practices, like planting more artichoke, for example, around our community, are those things that would reduce the hazard?
I would, I'm speaking for myself, thinking the way the model- In December of '24, there was some challenges releasing the maps, to release them for the whole state, so they went into a phased approach. Then unfortunately, the first week in January, we had the Palisades and Eaton Fire, so they were delayed in being released. So the data set- released. So, the data set is from 2024.
Okay. The second question I had was about the methodology for tree identification. I understand the ember cast for understanding the ignition sources and wind, but then how do you get the methodology to identify a tree is part of your Zone Zero requirement? I understand if it's in five feet of a building, it would automatically be Zone Zero, right? But if it's further away or it's part of a large grove, what's the methodology for identifying?
So, I'm not an expert in mapping, but they use LiDAR, and based on the LiDAR and other mapping techniques, they can tell the species of the tree by the canopy. So, that is what has been used in helping make these maps.
Okay. And is there a criteria available for the consumer to, to read, to understand? The criteria that goes in identifying trees?
So, are we going to have, like, a managed transition where we thin them out and then replace other species that support monarch butterflies and other protected species as we go through Zone Zero?
So, that, there will be, so, I'm trying to, let me gather my response here. It would be transitional. Sequel would still apply to any project. So, in that sequel process, those butterflies are going to be identified, and you're not going to be able to cut down every single one of those trees in that project. Is that?
So, we have to go through an analysis?
Correct. In, in the governor's executive order, there was some concern that that streamlined sequels so that there would be no protection for those said species. That governor's executive order, you still have to follow best practices. So, it's not a, you know, get out of jail, go, go free and cut. There's still requirements to make sure that we're looking out for those species in those sensitive habitats.
If I could just follow up on that, Commissioner Hernandez. So, if we did identify areas and we started removing a large amount of trees in that area, we would most certainly look at replanting in a different area, obviously, to, to, I mean, there's a couple of areas in here that are, that are free and clear. We would look at replanting in those areas. We would probably, not probably, we would most certainly get a biologist on board to identify species. If we knew we were going to be impacting the monarch migration, we'd most certainly look at replanting trees in a different area that aren't eucalyptus trees and could be useful as a habitat for the monarchs in their migration as well. So, that would be part of what we would do as the city to make sure that we're staying above board and doing the right thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Can you go over the zone thing again? I don't know what you mean by Zone Zero, Zone at 100 feet. What?
Yeah. So, around a structure.
Around a home or a structure?
A structure, you have different zones. So, you have zero to five feet around the home.
Okay.
You have a zero fuel zone potentially based on what the rules come out. And there might be landscaping that is allowed because it is non-receptive to fire brands. Maybe you have, it's going to be a big change for all of us, for me. I don't, my, my plants aren't in pots around my house. They're planted in the ground. Maybe you put them in a pot where it can be moved away from a firefight.
Right.
Then you have about 30 feet out from the home.
Thirty.
You have a reduction zone, and then from there out to 100 feet, you have a further reduction zone. So, maybe you have thin trees in that 30-foot zone, and they're trimmed up so that you don't have a ladder fuel, and then you continue that out to 100 feet from the home.
Most of the homes in the downtown area don't have 100 feet.
Don't have 100 feet, correct.
So, they're going to be in the reduction zone or in the zero zone that you're talking about?
They could be, and some of the stuff they were looking at is Marin County. They have a very progressive fuel reduction and Zone Zero implementation that they've done within the county, and changing fence types. If you've done redwood, right, all these years, maybe you're converting that to a non-combustible type material. So, that you're not, if you only have three feet between your house, the fence, and then your neighbor's house, you're really sharing that five-foot zone, so having a non-combustible fence.
Got it. Thank you.
We have to, we're gonna, we're gonna have to get creative and think outside the box, really, with where we are these days instead of what we've done all these years in the past. And then one thing to add, we keep talking about risk, hazard, insurance. I'm here for the hazard. The risk with insurance is a separate topic, which we could go round and round, but firewise communities are a great option for a community of a certain amount of homes to join a, become a firewise community. And once you've done that, you then can, for most insurance carriers, receive a reduction in your policy of a certain percent. So, if there are communities within Half Moon Bay city limits that could be, meet the qualifications for firewise, and they join together, that would be a great opportunity for people to become more aware of fire reduction and how it can benefit their neighborhood, maybe gain a little bit more community because they're all going to have to work together in reducing that, and also lower their policy.
Thank you.
Councilmember Penrose, if we could just follow up on the Zone Zero stuff as it relates to downtown, perhaps the biggest concern that I have with all of this, there's a small portion of downtown that, that is in the very high zone, and we have a, a high number of street trees down there. And a lot of those street trees, if we had to adhere to the five-foot zone, could theoretically have to be removed. Or we, there's really two options. You can prune the canopy on one side, making it, for all intents and purposes, a Charlie Brown Christmas tree, or you can remove the tree completely, right? So, there's a lot of trees that, that would meet that criteria in the downtown core, and that's not something that we want to touch right now, but it's, it's something that could theoretically happen. Onings on buildings, I don't know, I would get Chief Wilson's take on this, but onings on the side of buildings in the, the Zone Zero could potentially fall under that as well, too. We could have to, as a city, go in and, or the, or the fire district could go in and implement, that they have to take all the onings off the side of their buildings. The trees, for sure, is my biggest concern, and onings is something that we think about, but I don't know. Do you have any thoughts on that, Chief Wilson?
Yeah. So, when this first came out and I saw how impacted downtown was, I thought, wow, if I was the local awning builder, I'm going to be not happy. We're going to have a three-year implementation once Zone Zero is established. Like I said, it's not going to be a hammer. It's going to be coming from the fire district. We're going to work collaboratively with the city. That's a fiscal impact if they're city-owned onings, or if they're owned by the businesses, or even, either way, it's an impact fiscally. So, working together that when it needs replaced because it's been in the sun so long and UVs broken it down, maybe we replace it with a non-combustible awning. And through attrition, we're now being fire safe.
So, you could still have onings, just need to be non-combustible.
Non-combustible.
And when, this question came up a couple of weeks ago. So, the issue with onings is it captures embers, right?
Correct.
And, so if the building is stucco versus wood, does that make a difference?
For, for the awning itself, or?
Well, in terms of the threat to the building, if the building is stucco, would embers on the onings be as?
Stucco would be more resistant to embers than wood.
Right.
Yes. A lot of times, it's not necessarily the exterior construction of the home. It's the, the, the nooks and crannies that aren't sealed appropriately, and that's where the ember finds its, its bed and then establishes itself and grows from there. So, if it's a stucco wood frame structure and the ember gets caught in, say, an eve that's not sealed appropriately.
Makes its way in.
It works its way in, and it's not really caring about the exterior material at that time. So, that's, now, if it's direct impingement from embers, cast is beating on the side of it, the stucco would be more resistant over time. Yes.
Right. Thank you.
Another quick question here, since we're talking, you know, downtown, but even if you have very narrow setbacks, you know, side-to-side buildings, type of fences, we talked about this, but ultimately, though, it's the insurance industry that's going to make the decision because what we do impacts us financially, right? And this, obviously, we don't, fires, we're against that, but this, our pocketbooks are what's being impacted for insurance purposes. So, they're the ones that are going to decide, and I don't know if you collaborate at all with them. It's kind of odd, you're two separate entities the way I look at this, but they're the ones that are going to decide whether they first will insure you and then at what cost, based on risk. And hopefully, by doing, you know, changing combustible items to non-combustible, whether, oh, I can move, you know, a plant away from my house, but some of these things we're talking about downtown, I, I would assume if we do something, they will notice. And I don't know what triggers, we start seeing change in rates or things that are actually happening, you know? And I don't know if I had a direct question there, but it just seems to me it's just two different entities, I would hope, working together, but you don't see their maps. They don't share their maps. They're proprietary. And, you know, how do we know what we're doing is the right thing until, I guess, do we see our insurance rates? I, I don't expect you to have the answer for that, but that's why it's so hard for us to try and absorb all this and just think about what, worst-case scenario, what we may do to our downtowns. We're not the only community talking about this. I know everybody that has what we call our quaint downtowns probably drive the insurance industry crazy or, you know, so, and I don't know the answer to that, but it's just, I see why we're, we're asking you for answers maybe you don't have. And I, and I agree, it, it's a, a step-by-step approach. We move forward together, right, and we become more firewise. And I like the idea, we talk about a firewise community. I think that's, you know, a great way to approach this, and then hopefully, the insurance industry recognizes.
Who's, State Insurance Committee Commissioners, Ad Bonta, Bonta? Wrong name.
No, he's the Attorney General.
That's the Attorney General, right. Sorry. Who's this?
Lara.
Lara. No, I see a lot of stuff from their office. I'm wondering if they might have insurance things. Well, well, this is a good wake-up call, and I agree. I love the idea of a firewise community and eventually, a firewise city, so we can really, you know, be able to face our insurance issues. And, and different insurance companies might also differ, so it's good to start checking with your homeowner policies and find out what they're looking at. So, okay, if there's any more comments from here, okay, great.
Yeah, since we have the experts here, do you folks know the eucalyptus thinning that was done a couple of months ago just south of the Seymour Ditch on the Coastside Land Trust property? Was that done under the, the governor's emergency program?
I'm going to make eye contact with Leslie, but that is my understanding. The work that went on on CLT lands. Under the governor's executive order. If you could step up to the mic, if you can answer. Thanks, Leslie.
The work that was done under the governor's executive order was done on post land. That land, you had actually written to me about it, Commissioner Nagin-Gast, at the end of Magnolia, where the haystacks were, and then through that area. That was all under the governor's.
I'm, I'm curious, the, the thinning of that eucalyptus, if that was done in a way that is going to be required, it was more dramatic, I think, than anybody expected. So, if folks wanted to see what it's going to look like on the coast as we thin more eucalyptus growths, that would be a way to see what it's going to look like. So, I'm kind of curious, did they go overboard in that, or is that what will be required?
Yeah, we went out and inspected that, and it, it looked very much like what, what they had described in, in their proposal to the governor. So, I don't think they necessarily went overboard. I was a little surprised, too, by how much they had cut, but it's pretty much what they had described. And while I'm at the mic, the reason I missed your question is because I was following up with Cynthia. CERT is actually going to start offering classes on developing firewise communities. So, just so you know.
Yeah, so I, I just.
Yeah, CERT.
Repeat. So, there's a little pilot program there just south of the west dead end of Magnolia, where people can see what, what the eucalyptus growths will look like after they're thin. But I don't guess that we required any planting of, of different types of trees anywhere else for that project, did we?
That project was completed by the RCD, if my memory is correct. So, Coastside Fire did not have any input on that project.
And we would only require replanting of trees if they were city-owned trees on city property.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Chris?
I have two questions. One is, of the 250 identified trees that we've been discussing, how many of those are within the Zone Zero? How many of those are within the larger zone of 30 feet and beyond that to the 100-foot mark, so that we can understand the prioritization of what obviously would be most important to remove? I would assume it would be the Zone Zero trees. Do we list that information when we go to do these removals?
No, we have a database that we, that most of our tree inventory is kept in. The majority of the trees that would be, that would fall in Zone Zero would be like our downtown trees. So, there's, just going off of memory here, there's probably 40 or 50 street trees in the downtown area that would fall in Zone Zero that would, that would be in the, in the very high zones. As far as the rest of the trees, Frenchman's Creek, there's some trees close to the first little bank of houses right there when you turn onto Rousseau-Français, that would probably fall in the, in Zone One. So, not in Zone Zero, but they would probably be in Zone One. That would be a little more of aggressive thinning. Another 60 or so trees that would fall in Zone Two. So, not as much of an aggressive approach that we need to take. The courtyard property, the majority of, almost all of those trees would be in Zone Two, and there's so many more issues there because of the Pillar Cetus watershed. That's where the majority of the trees in the courtyard property are that would, that would have to be mitigated, would be in the, in the Pillar Cetus watershed. Carter Park, there's probably about 40 or so trees, and that, that, the, the majority of those are also in the Pillar Cetus watershed, so that would be problematic as well, close to the stage structure that we just completed as, as part of the Carter Park, Park project.
I guess my point is, can we prioritize, obviously focusing on the trees that are the most dangerous first before prioritizing the non-ones, I would assume?
Yeah, I'm guessing, based on this conversation, we would look at a thinning approach. So, taking 50% or 60% or whatever the arbitrary number is that we come up with in conjunction with our biologists, consulting with them, and what we can and can't do.
Okay. I'm asking this question because my next part of this question has to do with the downtown trees and what's providing as much fuel in the area to push this high, high, very high zone into downtown. I would assume from the maps that it's really the trees on the Arroyo, Leon Arroyo River, as well as the fire fuel located around the cemetery above it, pushing downtown. If we focused our efforts on that area to pull back the fire risk or hazard further away from downtown, could we be able to decrease our risk of having downtown be in a very high zone?
I'll let Chief talk to the hazard part of it. The majority of the property on the other side of Arroyo Leon watershed is not city property. So, that would be a, a joint effort with the private property owners to try and get some mitigation efforts done over there. But as far as reducing the hazard, I think that's probably a better question for Chief.
So, as we reduce fuels within those very high, high and moderate zones over the course of the next map, that should adjust those.
I'm, I'm hoping that if you could reduce the amount that's proximal, that maybe you can save downtown's trees by just reducing it further afield and drawing the map away from downtown.
Yep.
Okay.
Just one more thing on the watershed areas. The watershed areas, while possible to do all the biological work and be above board and get all the permits and everything. and get all the permits and everything, that is by far the most expensive mitigation we would have to do. There's no access points, there's no way to get the trees in and out, there's no way to get the crews in there to actually physically do the work, short of cranes or some sort of, some sort of miracle to get people in there. And that's part, you know, that's part of the discussion is that if we go that route and start mitigating the areas that need, that would help reduce the hazard load, it's an expensive proposition for sure.
So, thinking about downtown, would there be protections available to Heritage Downtown because it's a historical area? Could it get, you know, special attention in terms of the vegetation, like trees and things? It seems to me I read something that there are historical district, like, exceptions?
I am not aware of any exemptions that would be available for that. I will certainly look into that. I think that's an interesting approach and a good concept to consider for sure, but at this point, I am not aware of any exemptions that exist for stuff like that.
Because Heritage Downtown is really like four blocks. It seems to me, you know, that maybe we could take a look at that and take a look at the rules around potential historical exemptions. I think that would be important.
Yeah, no doubt.
Yeah.
Any more questions from City Council or Planning Commissioners before I move to public for now? We will now go on to public comment. Jimmy Benjamin to be followed by Sarah Sullivan.
Good evening, Jimmy Benjamin, 400 Pillar Cetus Avenue in Half Moon Bay. Welcome, Public Works Director, and welcome to the Fire Chief. It's nice to meet you both. Your colleagues on the other side of this dice must be very tired of hearing from me by now, but they're always gracious and it's nice to see you all. That was fast three minutes. I just want to say that this discussion, item two A, has been about fire hazards, which is important. It is a responsibility of, it's the stated responsibility of the fire districts of CAL FIRE to focus on that hazard. The City of Half Moon Bay has a much broader set of problems that they need to manage. And I hesitate to call that awesome responsibility a luxury, but if you appreciate the way I'm thinking about this, they do not have the luxury to focus on fire in the exclusive way that this analysis that I have heard tonight focused on it. It is not to say that it's not important, it's not to say that I don't want to be supportive, and I'm willing to be supportive. Stanford gave me some extra letters after my name in Risk Management. I'm happy to collaborate if I can. But I want to show in the two minutes that I'm afforded, and if I get buzzed off early, I'll sit down, you can shoo me off and it'll be okay.
Yes, sir.
I want to show you how unexpected consequences work. When you thin trees in a riparian corridor in an alluvial fan, and Half Moon Bay's riparian corridors are in fact alluvial fans, you set up a dynamic of erosion that causes bank widening. And the trees on those banks will follow the banks. If there are homes close to the bank, the trees will be closer to the homes than they were before you cut the ones that you cut down. If you cut down all the trees to stop that, the geologic unit that promoted the growth of that riparian corridor is loose, it is liquefiable, it is erodable, it creates a different hazard, a very dangerous hazard. And I am happy to meet with any of you colleagues, fellow citizens, members of the Commission or the City Council or staff to help them understand the personal story that I've been dealing with on that very topic. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jim. Sarah Sullivan, next, followed by Colleen Henry.
I'm not exactly sure how to do this, but my name is Sarah Sullivan and I have.
Get closer to the mic a little bit, please.
Coastside Books on Main Street. And I'm glad I came tonight and I did get a lot more information than I had previously. I just wanted to say a little personal story. August 18, 2020, we were evacuated from our home in Pescadero about three weeks due to a fire. And where did I come? Where I could still stay close to my community, I came to my second community, I came here, I came to Half Moon Bay with my two dogs, everything I could get into my car, I stayed at the Half Moon Bay Lodge. And the reason I did that is because I did feel safe. I felt safe here, I felt like I could be close to all of those things. And I went to my store, which was another sanctuary. And so I just want to take into consideration, you know, what Main Street means to the community and to people who come to visit and what that would be if it came to just raising everything, the trees and the planters and the canopies and everything that makes it unique. I have nothing but gratitude and respect for CAL FIRE. I mean, I owe them my home. I'm lucky I get to go back to my home. But I also want to temper that with, you know, making sure that our community and where we live is also a beautiful place still and that we don't get rid of everything over what could potentially happen. I also worked at Coastside Books when Cunyess burned down, you know, and we were that close. There was a parking lot between us and our building's still there. So I just think there's more to be looked at to see what could be done to preserve, you know, some of what makes our community and our downtown what it is. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Henry to be followed by Janice Moody.
Good evening, Council members, Mayor staff. That was a pretty heavy report there. Obviously, removing all the vegetation benches, awnings, planters would render our downtown just a desolate wasteland. And I know that's not what anybody wants. And obviously, we want to be safe, we want to be protected from fire danger. I trust that the Council will ask all the right questions, the Planning Commission, about how this extreme fire danger designation was rendered and how we can protect our heritage and historic Main Street shops and restaurants. It's the lifeblood of our community and many other downtowns across the state are failing, such as State Street in Santa Barbara. Downtown San Luis Obispo is in a downward spiral. Once thriving shopping destinations are almost completely vacant and shuttered. Our downtown community is very fragile and I hope we can preserve it so it supports the city, the locals, and all of us. And I know we all care about those same things.
Thank you, Colleen. Janice Moody, next, to be followed by Amber Stowe.
Hello, everyone. I'm Janice Moody and I've had a business in downtown Half Moon Bay. It's called Seascapes Succulent Nursery and Garden Design since 2016, although I grew up here on the coast as a toddler. I won't give you the date, but I've been here a long time. And I've seen the town grow and prosper over all those years and it's remarkably improved over what I recall as a child. And I thank all of you for planning it correctly and the beautification committee as well. My point is, I'm also a UC Master Gardener for San Mateo and San Francisco Counties, and I've given firewise presentations as a Master Gardener, one to La Dara Community a few months ago. And I was shocked to find out that I live in a very high-risk zone, whereas La Dara is considered moderate or high. And that really shocked me. And then I had, then I studied for days and days and learned so much. And now I realize those hills behind me are the fuel that could bring those embers to my business in my home. And I understand how that happens now. So I'm going to replace the grids on my vents to 1/8 inch, from 1/4 to 1/8, because I know that's primarily the cause of a lot of internal fires is getting in those crevices. And I'm going to replace that adjoining fence with a metal fence. That's on my to-do list. And by the way, I just finished my remodel last October and I'm up to code as of last October. I planted beautiful succulent garden in front of my place and a rain garden just to keep all of the runoff onto my property as per code. So now I have this beautiful grassy rain garden on the side of my house and I've got beautiful succulent garden in front. And now I'm supposedly out of code because it's within five feet of my place. So I'm just going to ask that there be waivers made and exceptions made, especially for succulents, which are full of water. I challenge any fire marshal to come by with their blowtorch and try to catch one of those on fire. And if you can catch it on fire, then I will move that plant. But if you can't get a succulent to burn, then I'm, those plants are there to stay. Okay. Yeah, that's my point. And also, what I learned as a Master Gardener studying for this seminar that I gave is that a well-hydrated garden is your best defense. And if, and limb up your trees and get rid of the dead debris and leaves around, there's something called composted mulch that you can use now that's very fire-retardant. I recommend it. So that's the best maintenance you can do, preventative maintenance you can do, is a well-hydrated garden and leave your trees as long as they're not touching your roof. Those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Janice. I hope you don't mind if I stop by your house for more tips. Thank you. Great information. Amber Stowe, I think will be our last speaker.
My name is Amber Stowe and my family owns the Paper Crane on Main Street. We have been there for 40 years this year. So I want to say thank you to Council, to staff and to Planning Commission and CAL FIRE for coming out and being so informative on this. Something that we have noticed is that our awnings are more likely to develop a problem with mold than they ever would be, honestly, to catch an ember. California is home to four of the nine major climatic zones on Earth. And for these kinds of guidelines to be prescribed to our area and places like where I grew up in East Ventura County, which is chaparral semi-arid desert, it just seems strange that these are all applied with the same even touch. If we end up raising everything in our downtown, getting rid of every planter, every tree, every bench, what we're going to actually end up with, and what they've studied, is a massive heat sink and increases in carbon dioxide and carbon monoxide and ozone as cars go through those areas. Europe has seen this exact same thing happen and they are actually adding trees back to their downtown. And they're experiencing the exact same climate change that we are in California. And they are able to add back those trees because they don't have to worry about. There's nothing that anyone sitting at these tables can do about that particular energy company, but at least we can kind of take into account that these ignition sources are coming from a place and coming down to affect us. I grew up right over the hill from the Pacific Palisades. And I watched on TV and when I was with my family as a wall of fire at 70 to 100 miles an hour came down and strafed and obliterated that community. And there isn't a tree or awning that we would be getting rid of that would be able to stop that. But the very unfortunate thing would be if we were to completely destroy our downtown before a wildfire even got here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amber. I believe we have anybody online? So that concludes public comment. Public comment is closed.
So what would you say are the most immediate next steps? What happens next here?
So the next steps would be for the Board of Forestry to adopt the rules package for the Zone Zero. And then implementation would start after that. So for Coastside Fire Protection District, our fire marshal is putting together a proposal on how we would start doing inspections. So in the 26th calendar year, we'd start doing inspections in the very high. And then we work collaboratively with the city in planning on how we're going to tackle based on what those rules are, since we have not seen them specifically yet, on how we would apply those to downtown, making sure that we're taking into everybody's comments and concerns effectively.
So you're saying you don't know what the rules package is going to look like yet?
No.
Will there be opportunities for the public to weigh in on the package once it's released?
I believe that the public comment portion's already been concluded on that. It's been going since the beginning of the year.
And so, but they won't be able to comment on the final package?
Well, the ruling will be ruled or put in place by the Board of Forestry, so then we would enact that as the fire district, Coastside.
And so there's no draft rule package, per se?
I have not, I personally have not seen a draft rule package.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from Planning Commissioner or Council? Okay, one, go ahead, Chris.
I'm a, is this on? Yeah, okay. I'm curious, these areas that are unincorporated in proximity to our areas, are they also Or agency or at least an inner-area approach to reduce that fire risk? We could possibly decrease the fire risk downtown for those property owners and.
Hazard.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Just to follow up on that question and Vice Mayor Ruddick's question about what the next steps would be as far as the city goes. The city's plan right now is to wait and see what comes down the pike, what kind of enforcements are going to be, what rulings come out, what, if there's other jurisdictions that are bordering city limits or city properties that are going to have enforcement put on them, see what kind of collaborative efforts we can come up with, see who we can partner with to try and do the most good with the least amount of city expenditures, right? So that's what the city's next steps are in all this.
If I could also just add to that briefly, you know, a couple of years ago, the Council approved and adopted the Streetscapes Master Plan. And the future of that, we don't know. And the future of that, we don't know. The council's changed since then and we need to weigh in on that. But I pulled it up during this meeting because there were several things that were said about our downtown that kind of struck me. And, and one of the, the main things that comes out of that plan is wider sidewalks. And part of the way we achieve wider sidewalks is that the trees move from sitting within the sidewalks themselves and into bulb-outs that go out into the street that define the parallel parking along Main Street. And it just makes me think that if we were to pursue that plan further, the next step is really refined designs, especially for Heritage Downtown. And we could take a very purposeful approach to that design work to incorporate a lot of what we've heard tonight and, and maybe be able to tackle through state and federal funding and how these big projects get, get moved forward to achieve some of this without losing the character, without negatively impacting what makes our downtown so incredible. So that could be a positive impact of the work that we've already done. You know, there, there's a lot to explore there and that's a separate topic. But I think it's, it's approaches like that where we're trying to deal with one thing and now that we have some additional context, we may be able to accomplish a lot through some of these projects going forward. So thank you for letting me share that, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Paul and then Jacob.
Thank you. And likewise, if, if fire comes downhill, I look all the hills around us as unincorporated. So what kind of collaboration may be there where we may benefit more than that, you know, than the county, right? So it's just kind of, this is a lot and it's going to be a lot for us to absorb. It's going to be a lot for us to, to plan out. And I assume everybody's going to have to collaborate together. You know, it's not just, you know, jurisdictions next to each other statewide. Will the monies be available for all of us to tackle it because, and will energy companies help out on this? You know, I don't know, right? There's a lot of knowns. So I just want to go back to this Board of Forestry ruling. Is that's happening the end of December this year?
That's the target date is on or before December 31st of 2025.
Right. And they normally hit, meet their deadlines?
I, I believe so. The governor has asked for them to meet that deadline. So I'm, I'm assuming they are attempting to do so.
So then we, this is very fluid. We'll hear more about this and we'll obviously let the, the community know there will be plans discussed, talked about. I assume we will talk about all this before somebody from the Fire District knocks on somebody's door, right? Wouldn't that, wouldn't that be our goal to make sure we've talked, you know, that we've let the community know what's happening through the Fire District or would the Fire District go out and do things on their own? I assume you're going to work with us.
Well, the Fire District already does inspections within both the city and the district. So we would just continue as doing that same business, normal business that we would normally do.
Okay. But I mean, just with these new, this criteria that's coming up.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably, we will do a social media kind of blitz where we'll put out a video on, you might see this person in your neighborhood. Here's what they're here for. Here's what they're doing informational. And we can share that with the city if they want to post that on their...
Well, I think the city should have, you know, not everybody's as socially media-connected, but I, I think it'd be good to have a lot of outreach by us what's happening when we know what happens. We don't even know what's going to happen yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear somebody else? Okay. Okay.
Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question for CAL FIRE. If they have an experience here in locally, let's say within the last 50 miles over here where fire breaks, do they work, not work? Are they recommended, not recommended? Do you have a comment on that?
For fuel mitigation projects to slow the forward progress of fire?
Yeah, just up in the hills and just fire breaks to...
Strategically placed fire breaks are, are effective.
And that'll keep down the ember suppression and fire and contain the fire in its certain areas?
They usually keep the fire from going into the canopy of the trees and at a lower intensity rate so we're able to extinguish it quicker.
So strategically placed fire breaks surrounding our community may have some, some impact on what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that it's going to be really important to maintain a good relationship, working relationship with the Resource Conservation District of San Mateo County. They have been a recipient and will continue to be a recipient for a fair amount of state bond funding, like Prop 4, the $10 million, $10 billion bond that passed last November. There's lots of money in there for, for wildfire and forest management and those sorts of things. And the RCD, you know, is a master of collaboration between public agencies and private land owners because a lot of this work will have to happen on private land. So it's good to keep in touch with Kellex Nelson and, and the team there because they are, they are experts on this issue, so.
Thank you. That's great. Any other thoughts before we take a break here?
I, I just wanted to summarize what I think I heard. So we don't have a draft rule set on fire on, on the new rules that are coming out. We can't provide any additional comment on proposed rules. The rules are going into effect in December and CAL FIRE will start enforcement in January under the new rules.
Inspection.
So...
Inspection. Under the new rules.
That, that is not correct.
Okay.
The LRA Fire Hazard Severity Zone was adopted by Coastside Fire Protection District in June. That is in place. So as of today, we could have folks go out and do inspections. Zone Zero is not ruled upon yet. Everything else is in place and effect as of, I think it was June 24th or something like that.
The Zone Zero rules, we don't have a published set of draft rules yet. They're going into effect basically January.
Correct.
And then you'll start your inspections for any new project for Zone Zero. If somebody wants to do a significant remodel, you would do Zone Zero.
New building.
Yeah, a new building, just a new building. Okay.
Yep.
So for existing homeowners and existing businesses, are you going to be walking down Main Street saying, get rid of that awning, get rid of that bench, get rid of that plant? That's the question that I think isn't being asked directly.
January 1st, I will probably not be having my folks walk down Main Street issuing inspections. We'll collaboratively come up to make sure that we're implementing it appropriately based on what the rules, some things that came up were the historical and heritage part. Maybe that's why it was not so easy to pass and that hopefully that they're looking at those things. And then over the course of a three-year period, Zone Zero should be implemented to the 1,684 structures within Coastside. But we live in, I'm, I'm a realistic individual. Three years, while it seems like a long time, is actually a short period of time. And for some people, that could be a major fiscal impact and changing, you know, getting things approved downtown to, to move sidewalks, do those, that, that doesn't happen at the snap of a finger. So I think we're going to work collaboratively for an end goal, but not January 1st. We won't be knocking on your door. If I could get your address to make sure so we don't have that happen.
I'm in the wait zone here.
Well, I think this has been great. I think it's been, we're taking it seriously. We have plans. We have information and we're being proactive, which is great. So thank you, Chief, for being here tonight and answering all our questions.
One last question?
We have one last question.
When is the next update planned for this map?
I would have to check the cycle. It's, I believe it's a five-year cycle right here.
Five-year cycles.
I'd have to, don't quote me on that, but that's been about the, the rate of them.
It's five years.
He said five years. Okay. We're good? We all know where we stand? Great. Thanks again. Thanks, Tom. Thanks, everybody. All right. We'll take a five-minute break before we move on to 2B.
Okay, everybody. And our two members of the public are still here, great. Thanks for bearing with us. So we're going to move on to Item 2B, which is the Half Moon Bay Safety Element Update, which I did read all 56 pages, but it's not exactly, you know, top recommended. I'll wait till the movie comes out also. We're going to receive a presentation on the progress of the city's safety element update, provide for public comment, hold a discussion and provide any direction or recommendations in response. One thing to keep in mind, this is a general policy document that we're talking about right now. It's tons of details in it. We will not be able to get through everything. And it is, again, it's a live document. You know, it's open to recommendations and more comments as we move forward. But there's a lot of pieces to it. There's a lot of organizations involved. And it's pretty much got every possible element in pollution, as far as pollution, that might be possible. And we'll figure, yeah, solution pollution. We'll figure out, you know, which ones we need to prioritize first and which makes sense and how, you know, how they all interact with each other, especially with these nine different elements. So why don't we start out with a staff report? And move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Brownstone. Good evening, council members and commissioners. You know me, but for the public, I'm Leslie Lake, the Community Development Director. I'm going to do a quick handoff to Erin. Oh, man, I had it. Fenn and Steele. Gosh. Anyways, Erin is with the county's consultant who is doing this multi-jurisdictional effort, and he'll talk more about that. But one thing that you should know about him is that he's worked on many safety elements. He really is sort of the expert in this field. And so he's a great person to direct questions to. He also has a really good sense of what the safety element is and should be and what the state expects it to be. So I'm going to pass it off to him. Sorry, messed up your name.
Thanks, Leslie. Good evening, Mayor. Council members, commissioners. My name is Erin Fenn and Steele. I'm part of the Placeworks team. I actually am a principal at a company called Atlas Planning Solutions. I'm actually a former Placeworks employee, so I have a long history with all of the team members that have been supporting all of the jurisdictions as part of this prep project. Let's get into it real quick because it's late. Here's the agenda. We're basically going to walk you through what a safety element is, talk to you a little bit about the process that has been ongoing with the safety element update, and then we'll focus in on Half Moon Bay. So let's talk a little bit about the introduction. So this is part of what's called the PREP project. This is the Peninsula Resilience Planning Project. This is a project where all nine of these communities came together, the county and these eight cities, to essentially pool resources so that you could get updates to your safety elements. There was a community engagement component, and so this was an easy way for us to do community engagement at a county-wide scale and to find some of those economies of scale. And in some cases, for some communities, also help with some of the other components to a safety element update, like a climate vulnerability assessment. That wasn't necessary for Half Moon Bay. You guys have been doing some work there already, so we relied on that. So that was not part of this process. So real quick, what is the safety element? This is basically the state's required document that every city and county needs to have to address what are the natural hazards, what are the public safety concerns, and how are you addressing how climate change may affect or address the hazards within your community. So you want to have this document, you need to have this document to essentially try to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of your residents, businesses, focused on hazards, focused on natural, mainly natural hazards. It includes policies, it includes actions, and it also includes, you know, some detailed information to give context and some maps to really provide you with an understanding of what are the concerns within your community. So why are we updating the safety element? Well, it's not only a required element, but there have been a number of changes that the legislature has put upon cities and counties to make this element more up-to-date and more in line with many of the conditions and the concerns that the state has been facing. There's also the integration of other plans and documents that have been prepared, one of which is the county's Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan, which the city has an annex to this document. And there is an incentive to incorporate or integrate that plan into an updated safety element. And that actually provides you with some eligibility and enhancement for grant funding and for some additional support from the state during some sort of incident or disaster. Safety elements are really focused on being a high-level document. It's a big-picture focus. And the issues that are more relevant today than were back when the safety element was originally prepared, back in the '90s, are things like climate adaptation resilience, emergency preparedness and response, infrastructure protection and improvement, community equity and accessibility, and a focus on intra-jurisdictional coordination, which is a very key component to risk reduction for a lot of communities. There have been a lot of coordination efforts. We focused on making sure you were getting that integration with your hazard mitigation plan. There's a lot of the work around one shoreline and what one shoreline has been doing countywide. And then trying to ensure that there is some, a focus on equity as part of the process, as well as what we're putting into your element. The schedule that we've been following with this PREP project and with your safety element update started earlier this year. And we've seen some community engagement during the springtime. We started working on the safety element document and working with staff. And that's what brings us here tonight, is the kind of finished draft product that we're looking for feedback and thoughts on, not only from you, as well as the public, with the intent to start working through the state agency review process. You saw the fire hazards severity zone maps that you just looked at not too many minutes ago. The fact that you have those maps and the fact that you have very high fire hazards severity zones requires that your safety element go through a review process with CAL FIRE and be approved by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. So that's one of those layers of agency coordination that we have to do because of the circumstances within the city. What's in the safety element? So again, the safety element, it's going to have information about the background and the profiles of potential hazards. We're going to, or we've developed some goals and some policies to help you address some of those hazards of concern. There's implementation actions. These are things that either the city could focus on doing as an organization or expect others to do, like potential applicants. And then there's maps and additional data that's included. One of the things about the maps that you see here is they are static. However, if you go to the PREP online mapping viewer, you have the ability to create your own maps. And this is a map that I created for this presentation to highlight the fault zones, or the faults, the Alquaspirlo Special Study Fault Zones and the liquefaction hazards for the city. And there are a number of other layers. So anybody who is very much interested in where is my house and what are the hazard zones that I want to, I'm most concerned about, they'd be able to go on and look at that map viewer and be able to get that information for themselves. Now, one of the things about general plans that can be a little bit confusing is what is the difference between a goal, a policy, and an implementation action? So the goal is essentially a broad statement. This is the future condition that you hope to achieve as a community. The policies reinforce that goal. These are things that you want to make sure you are doing or requiring. These are the tools that Leslie's going to be using when an applicant comes to the counter and is looking to develop a piece of property. If we don't have certain goals, I'm sorry, certain policies in the element that help ensure protection of the public safety, health, and welfare, then, you know, that's, we're missing a tool that could be at your disposal to make sure your community is better protected. And then ultimately, the implementation actions are those specific steps that help carry out policies. And these are either steps that the city can do or steps that you would ask potential applicants or property owners to do. When it came to policy development, we took into account a lot of good information. So we collected a lot of information from the feedback process and the community engagement process. We talked to service providers and looked at their needs and experiences, talked to staff. We looked at what are the requirements that the state's going to expect of you, a jurisdiction of your type. And then we also tried to apply some of the local and the regional best practices that we have been using across the state. And then we collaborated with a group of planners with our team because we know that San Mateo County is not like every other county out there. We know there are some endemic conditions that we need to be cognizant of as we're putting together policies for your community. Policy types can come in a variety of shapes and sizes. So they could be programmatic. They could focus on the development of plans or specific regulations. They could be focused on your capital improvement projects. They could have education focus. Or they could be evaluative. So we tend to try to give you the right size of policy types. And so you may not see all of these in your element, but it doesn't mean that you're missing anything if one of those is missing. It just depends on the community. The public review or the public engagement process was used to try to make sure we captured as many voices and as much input into this. We did conduct a meeting here at the library. This is a picture from that meeting. We had a decent turnout. And you can see we had a lot of boards around the room and asked for a lot of feedback from attendees. In addition to that, there were other workshops that were conducted across the county. We did a community of concern meetings. We held stakeholder meetings. The map survey tool was used. The study session like tonight is being done not only for your jurisdiction, but all of the other participating jurisdictions are doing similar activities. And then ultimately, this will come back for public hearings. And like I had mentioned before, the Pub Project website that has been developed for this process that also provides access to that mapping viewer. Some key things that we heard. I know it's getting late, so I'm going to go ahead and just kind of move quickly through all of this. But essentially, we gathered as much information as we could and provided as many opportunities as we could to get this information so we could infuse it into this process and into your output of your element. And again, that input, it's really helped to inform the way we looked at the hazards, the way that we are focusing on things like emergency communication and preparedness, infrastructure resilience, equity, and then, of course, regional coordination. So let's talk a little bit about the topics that are addressed. I have identical slides to what's in the staff report when it comes to the goals, policies, and actions, all of the text that was in the staff report on these slides. I'm not going to go through all those individually. What I was thinking at this point is to just stop here. We've got these topics. If there's a specific topic you want, I can pull that up onto the slide, but we can open this up now for questions and discussion if that is amenable to the council and the commission.
Yeah, we can, we can start to open it up based on the time. So I'll go back and forth between council and... So someone like to start, Councilman Paul?
Thank you. Just a couple of quick questions. You caught my attention when you said mainly natural hazards. I'm like, oh, there's unnatural hazards? So I just started thinking a little bit. And I'll throw out an example when I was trying to see in the element itself. You talk about diseases. But let's say hazardous materials, like old acides.
So hazardous materials are not a required hazard under the government code. So the California Government Code identifies that a safety element needs to address a variety of hazards. And hazardous materials is not part of that. So it's not required. Most of the time, we do have some sort of discussion about hazardous materials, especially if it was in the previous element. I believe we do have that here under that human-caused hazards category. I believe we do have that here, under that human-caused hazards category. But it's not something that the state is requiring and expecting at the general plan level.
Okay. So we wouldn't necessarily go out of our way to find something?
Not necessarily, yeah. And for the most part, hazardous materials review is typically done as part of a development review process anyways, right? And one of the things that we've always, I've always found with many of the safety elements we've updated, is those done in the 90s, they would drop in all of this hazardous materials information, within a year that information's dated. It does no good to have all of this detail in there, because the state and the federal hazardous material repositories, they have their sites where they're identifying where are those locations, and those change frequently. And so once I put that into a plan, it's basically stale within a year.
And that kind of leads into my second question.
Sure.
Like the fire hazard map?
Yes.
That's going to change, especially if we don't do our next update for another 30 years. But, you know, do we make sure it's clear you go to whoever's responsible, maintain the maps to make sure, you know, our element is up to date, but the mapping itself will change as more information's available?
Yes, absolutely. And you're absolutely right. This is not the oldest element I've ever updated. The oldest element I've updated was the first original element for the city that was done in like 1976. So you guys are a little bit more up to date. But the housing element update cycle actually now requires the safety element to be updated. So as new information becomes available, whether it's, you know, five years old or one year old, when the housing element gets updated, you need to open up the safety element and you need to update any new and relevant information that is...
So we'll be on the same cycle as the housing element?
Technically, yes. You can update it sooner if you'd like to.
But at least we'll be doing that.
But at least with every housing element.
That's when maps and any other information obviously will be updated.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could you go through your human-caused hazard, please?
Sure. Let's move on to, so there are two topics under human-caused hazards that were in the previous element, and then we brought forward into the new element. The first one was hazardous materials. We updated the goal. We left most of the other information generally the same, just updating it, you know, for some grammar or some other minor changes. But for the most part, we left it fairly consistent with what was in the previous element. The second topic under human-caused hazards was airport safety. And again, both of these are not required under the government code requirements.
Quite far away. I mean, it's down by Sam's, isn't it? So how does, I'm trying to figure out, how does the airport have any impact on the city?
Yeah, so the airport is in the county's jurisdiction and then, but the zones that are identified in what's called the Airport Compatibility Plan for the county extend into the city. And so the city has some role in participating in those compatibility zones that are sort of the zones further out from the airport within the city's jurisdiction.
No matter how wide the city's influence is at a particular point, because there's this strip that goes all the way up Coast Highway, that really, you know, it just, and it wraps in a hotel and I think Sam's, and that's about it. So the closest, I guess, home structure would be way, way far away. So I'm wrestling with that right now.
And making sure that you're coordinated with the owner-operator and the surrounding jurisdictions so that you can understand what you may need to do if something were to occur, some sort of incident. So that's really where most of the focus is. It's about coordinating with that jurisdiction or with those owner-operators. We often find similar types of issues too, when you have a facility outside of your community, but there's the potential for that to impact into your community, which is kind of what's happening with the airport, with these different zones that have been identified with that airport land use compatibility plan.
Is there fiscal impact to all of this?
Physical?
Fiscal?
Fiscal. From a coordination standpoint, I would probably look to Leslie or the city manager as to whether or not be any fiscal impact.
I'm still wrestling with, how does, you know, that zone, which is clearly miles away from the probably approach zone of the airport, affect any residential unit within that strip of the city? I mean, that's what I'm wrestling with.
Well, it's not, it's not really the, it's not, that's not really what the policies are aimed at. The policies are aimed at working with adjoining jurisdictions to coordinate around a disaster response plan and to mitigate any potential risks and hazards that could be caused by the airport. So that's, it's not necessarily aimed at specific dwelling units and housing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Could I ask a follow-up question on that? Could that affect if you were trying to locate housing in a flight path with sound, whether they're approaching or leaving an airport? Isn't that what, why an airport could be a hazard? Or something you have to take in consideration if you were trying to house, let's say, we decided to change the zoning at Sam's, and now we're going to put a, not saying this would ever happen, but you're going to put something different there for housing, and that happens to be the flight path. Isn't that what this is supposed to keep us appraised of?
That is, in fact, what the Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan does.
Right, because I've seen it, I'm on the county airport land use committee, and it was interesting, because San Bruno is going to do something different at, what's that mall name, Tran? Yeah, something, Housing is going to go there, but you have the influence of the much different airport, but the San Francisco airport. So that was a big part of the discussions, and the community has to be aware of that. So I assume that's probably something we would need to look at if we decided to put housing somewhere in our jurisdiction that where the airport was identified.
Yeah, that's correct. We would look at that, for sure. And the process for that would be sort of separate from the safety element.
Yeah.
But yeah, you targeted the right plan.
But I think with the airport, they're calling it out for Coast Guard Sea Rescue, disaster relief, because that runway, we're blessed with that runway. It's widest and longest, and that's why you have all these private pilots coming from San Carlos all around the Bay Area, coming to our airport right here, for that factor that it's so big and so long, it's really safe and easy to land on. And that's why they're using all these very large airplanes here, you know, we're fortunate to have that. So I look at that as a safety plus. Now, what Paul's talking about is, I'm on the airport board for San Francisco Noise, and that is one of the factors, is the noise factor taking place. If you have houses that people are bitching about the noise and the DBs and all this stuff. San Francisco's always on the radar, Oakland's on the radar, Half Moon Bay's not, but we're getting more and more traffic coming our way, and I'm hearing people calling me and texting me and saying, hey, I'm seeing more and more commercial. So I think that's part of what we're trying to look at too, or that's not a really safety thing, though?
That's more of the noise. You have a noise element, that's also another one of your required elements. That's where you would most likely want to start addressing any particular noise impacts associated with that.
Yeah, I think, you know, we do have eight other goals here, you know, trying to be out by 11:00. So I want, Steve had a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I on here? Hard to tell.
Doesn't sound like it. Now you are, you're good.
I noted in the staff report that Director Laco invites us all to submit our comments, there being so many dozens of policies in writing by November 20th, and I'll be happy to do that. How exactly should I send them to you?
You can just email them to me. And for the benefit of the public, that's L-L-A-C-K-O@halfmoonbay.gov. And the comments, the particular comments that we're most interested in by the 20th are those related to the fire section, because we have to get that off to CAL FIRE as soon as possible. And we will continue, though, to take comments throughout this process.
Okay, I will do that tomorrow. I do have one question, though.
I'll push a topic. Since we're now in winter, I think, you know, the flooding situation, there are so many factors. And it seems like, you know, one of the biggest factors is we are having, you know, the storm of every 20 years is now happening every three years. So we're finding out, you know, about new creeks that, you know, didn't even exist or are dangerous, and ditches and creeks, and we, floodplains, there's a lot of things built in floodplains and trying to figure out, you know, how to control that. And I think one thing that's really frustrating is to try, you know, how to be proactive. And we can't get preventative permits, you know, to do a little dredging here and there. You've got to wait till an emergency, you know, starts flooding, and then you can get an emergency permit. That is just a Kafkaesque way of planning, do you know what I mean? That you have to not be proactive, wait, then have your emergency permit, and interacting with the Coastal Commission. And I understand all the reasons, you know, to not create certain precedents, et cetera. But, you know, how can we deal with it in a more organized way? I was just joking with our vice mayor, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, a lot of
So that's where the safety element is, it's not really designed to be a prioritization document, right? But what it is intended to do, it's really intended to make sure that you have as many tools in your toolbox, right? And so one of the things we always try to do is, we want to make sure that Leslie has the ability, when somebody comes in with an application to do some sort of development, that they can push back and say, how are you addressing issue X, Y, and Z? You know, we have an issue with flooding, you're in an area that constantly floods, what are you doing to basically make sure that your property isn't going to flood, nor is it going to exacerbate flooding impacts in surrounding properties, right? So we want to make sure we've got those types of policies in place. Then from there, it's a matter of also understanding, what are some of the actions that you want to take as a city? That's where the implementation actions can play a key role, because it can also start to define the things that you're willing to either expect on others or put into your own action plans, whether it be city council priorities, whether it be in your capital improvements program, whether it be in drainage master plan. And those are the kinds of documents where you can start to drill down on the details and start to understand, what is it that you want to do and how are you going to prioritize that? Because ultimately, everything is going to cost money, and the only people that have the ability to say we're going to spend money are the five of you up there. And so you want to make sure that staff have the ability to come to you with, here's the process and the methodology, here's what we've done. The general plan sets that up, but it's really those subsequent plans, those action-oriented plans, that are going to basically be the bowling ball that's going to start knocking those pins down for you. And so we want to make sure we've given you as many hooks to hang your hats on, to start to identify all of those action-oriented plans that you want to start undertaking, or that you already have, right? So we want to make sure we're connecting to the existing ones, and then identifying any new ones that you think are necessary to make sure you're addressing the next 20 years worth of problems that you anticipate.
So we have a grant to begin the implementing zoning ordinances for our updated LCP. So I'm guessing that's going to be a place where some of the policies will be implemented, safety element policies?
Yes, we can incorporate them into the implementation plan. And we also have a really good foundation in our environmental hazards section of our LUP. So there's a lot of overlap in the safety element and the LUP. And we did check as we were going through to make sure there weren't any incongruities there, but the LUP is very much more regulatory-based already. It's a little bit of an easier leap to the implementation plan. And then I think I had a conversation with Commissioner Hernandez earlier this week, and I think just taking a look at some of the way these... I think just taking a look at some of the way these these policies are organized so that they can be grouped with where policies sort of overlap or are similar to each other will help us as we look through here and we try to prioritize and figure out what goes into the implementation plan, what is already enough for us in terms of guidance, policy guidance. So so I think I think there's a little bit of work here to do in terms of organization that will help us as we move forward with prioritization.
And and you mentioned to me that it looks like there's some possibility to do some work to protect downtown against fire hazards. Looks like there might be some language, some latitude for us to pursue different policies. And is that something that we can also build into the safety element? You know, some mention of historic downtown and policies relating to protecting it? Does that belong here? Is that another document or?
Yeah, I think it's perfectly legitimate to put an action in that we we explore possible exemptions to, you know, for historic areas and zone zero and different ways to mitigate for those exemptions or something to that effect.
Yeah, rather than sending it by email, I would like to request that we, you know, look at potential language to be included.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have some language in there. I mean, some of it, like on, what is it, Policy SCP seven one? We were talking about awnings today, improved awnings and shadings and shade trees and other green infrastructure. Help residents connect or for, well, actually, it's for shading. And here we were talking earlier with the fire, you know, we were having issues with the awnings and trees, but here we're actually saying we want those.
Can you can you show me where that or tell me where that is so I can find it?
Policy SCP seven dash one.
So I know that there's it may seem like we have an inconsistency there. We're looking at policies that are trying to help address urban heat island, extreme heat concerns, right? And so that's where shading and tree placement. The thing about shading and tree placement is that when it's done wrong, it's a fire hazard. and always default to, I want to put more trees in. So but yeah, and if we need to also wordsmith some of these policies to address that concern, that's very easy to do. That's part of why we wanted to have this conversation.
And then get policy SCP seven three, preserve and expand the urban tree canopy to lessen the impacts of extreme heat.
And so that would again be understanding where extreme heat concerns are. We can look at maps that show where you have heat island effects, you know, intensity, like we have some mapping that shows greater intensity of of heat in parts of of your community. Those would be the areas where you would want to focus increasing shade. And if you already have trees there, it might be that you want to preserve those trees if it's possible. Of course, we have to look at those zone zero ramifications, right? The other piece to this as well is that, as I heard your Public Works Director indicate, you'll be working with a biologist, right? The trees in your community will increase or decrease risk based on health. The biologist is going to be a key component of identifying where those healthy trees are versus those unhealthy trees. And that's part of what I think we're also trying to get at, too, with that preservation aspect, is we want to make sure you're preserving those kinds of trees that actually don't increase your risk to these types of conditions.
And then I think this policy here SCP six seven would fall into what Mr. Benjamin brought up, ensure that new landscaping does not exacerbate wildfire or flood risks and align with vegetation and stormwater management standards.
Right.
And the other one is SCP six six, which was require drought tolerant landscaping, which is what was brought up earlier today from the lady that's growing the cyclets. And new private and municipal development in accordance with applicable state and local laws.
Could you just do a hierarchy if there's a conflict in all in any of the elements? Or do you have to be wordsmith everything correctly in this?
When you say hierarchy, are you referring to one element trumping another?
Yeah.
Usually, our goal and our intent and what's required by state law is that there is no inconsistency. So if we are finding inconsistencies, we want to make sure we address that so that we don't even have a need for a hierarchy, that all elements are basically working together.
But it sounds like fires challenging. I mean.
Always is.
Yes, yeah, okay.
You know, on those on those same areas that Patrick was just pointing out, using drought tolerant landscaping, when I walk around most neighborhoods, I just see a lot of wood chip mulch everywhere. And that's almost like an ember carnival. I mean, even even when everything's fine, that's a few blow on it, it's like an ember already. So and then when it's drought, when we have drought, we have less water for irrigation. It's we're penalized for over irrigating. Someone earlier was talking, oh, yeah, I just got to really overwater everything to. So it's really frustrating when we put people in those double binds. Is it easier to integrate some of this and say, yeah, we prohibit anything but drought resistant mulch? Or don't sell it in our local stores, you know? So it gets people to really reduce this incredible fuel that's just sitting there all the time everywhere. And it's all right, it's always next to right next to the house.
in there because then it's it's just sort of laying around for the next eight years. But but we could certainly make that something, an ordinance that we pass at any time. And I think that there's enough policy guidance here that we could do that.
Chris would like to talk. And not to put words in your fire chief's mouth, but I would potentially ask them, when the new zone zero requirements come into play, what their inspection protocol is going to look like and how they may treat wood chips adjacent to a structure like that. Because that may be one of the criteria that they may already be looking at. So you may have a regulation either in place or some sort of mechanism that may come into place. So it's one of those questions probably worth asking.
Okay, thanks. Yep, Rick?
This is a great document. It's a great starting point for the conversation. I've, you know, January twenty twenty four, we witnessed pretty severe flooding here. And I don't see, I mean, there's language that talks about Pillar Cidos Dam. And what I understand is Pillar Cidos Dam needs to be retrofitted. But the core of downtown, along Pillar Cidos, would be underwater, including Commissioner Ream's house, which is unfortunate, right? But there's no, I mean, maybe this is stupid, but there's no mitigation for this. You know, there's no emergency, you know, damming or things that we can do and take action on if we know that the dam is going to break, if it's above a certain level. So I'd love to see something where we have clear communication to the city about what the status of Pillar Cidos Dam is and what mitigations we can take if and when that dam fails. Because maybe there's nothing we can do but run away, right? But I think maybe there, I mean, we have clever people in our community. There may be things we can do and we can plan for. We have a concrete factory, like in the inundation zone, right? We have materials and supplies. I don't know how one deals with things like this, but I'd like us to have a clear policy that gives us something we can do in the event that the dam collapses. What can we do where we know it's going to collapse? How can we take action and get better visibility? I don't see anything calling for the clear undergrounding of utilities and prioritizing that in our policies. I mean, it's the number one fire hazard, so we should figure out how to prioritize it. And I think we should really work closely with the county on this because, I mean, they're not just ugly. It's it's insane how much activity happens on the streets all the time. And, you know, it just seems like we'd all be better off longer term to figure out how we can work to get those undergrounded. It's 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 really important. Going back to the comment that was made in the last item by our friend with the fancy letters after his name who does risk management, there there seems to be a lack of holistic approach to these policies. And so I understand they all need to work together, but like when we talk about fire mitigation, we're talking about removing trees, right? But then it affects what we do or how do we create safe places for people because now we've lost all the shade when it's hot? You know, we're increasing runoff, we're increasing, you know, the risk of flooding. If we, you know, so I think we need to maybe step back and just think about, especially since Cal Fire is asking us to start being more aggressive with how we police our trees, I think we need to have more thoughtful policies. I think we need to prioritize a few things. One of them is the landscaping materials that we recommend, specific species. We just did the park across the street from City Hall. We planted New Zealand box trees, great trees. Guess what? Big fire risk. Okay? I looked it up. It's like, oh, my gosh. So like, we should start looking at replacing trees with olive is what we were talking about or willow that are appropriate for our community because they prevent flooding, they prevent fire, they provide shade, and they're high tolerant trees. So we need a policy around those sort of A grade trees for fire resistance. And Janice Moody's comment about succulents and landscaping, that, I mean, they're non-native species, it's a separate issue, but like for decorations and things, they can act as a fire break. I think there's certainly benefits to looking at things like that. But especially around trees, because trees are really bad for fires, but they're really good for almost everything else, including the value of your property. So it'd be great for us to just kind of maybe prioritize what we're doing from a landscaping We do not have any clear, strongly worded policies around fire breaks. We heard testimony from our fire chief today, that fire breaks are effective. There's plenty of evidence that we can put fire breaks in certain places, and we need to think about them strategically, especially if we're doing large scale public housing projects or if we're doing any new infrastructure. Those types of things can be designed in ways that function as fire breaks. And I'm happy to, you know, I've I've put this offer out before, bring in people who've done Rebuild LA, they're working on Santa Cruz. We can get industry experts to talk about how you can incorporate fire breaks into new structures. We're doing this, we, so in January twenty twenty five, my family suffered the loss of, you know, family home in the Pacific Palisades. And as we rebuild, we've gone and learned about how you use fire resistant structures, and there's a lot of things we can do. In my opinion, we should prioritize the elimination of highly risky structures like stick frame housing. Now, we should look at it. In three years, we shouldn't be doing anything, one could argue, we shouldn't be using any stick frame housing in Half Moon Bay or anywhere in California because it's 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 going to go up in flames and it's going to be uninsurable. There's nothing you can do with a stick frame house. And putting screens on helps, but when we have a severe fire like the Palisades, they they won't last. It doesn't matter what you do. So those are sort of, I want our little town to not float away, get washed away or burned to a crisp. And when we look at these policies, we need to have some prioritization around what we're going to focus on. We need to go address the highest risk areas, and fire from utilities is not addressed in this document. And we need a backup plan for if the Pillar Cidos, God forbid, ever fails, we need something to figure out what we're going to do there. And I don't see those things addressed. The other thing that, there's a lot of generalized language that was written in committee and is it applies to the county. Our number one risk strategy in Half Moon Bay if an event happens is run away. Okay, that's literally the first thing we need to do is run away. And the last time we tried to run away, when we had a tsunami warning, we didn't do it very well. Like, nobody knew where to go. We didn't have a safe way to get out. We need prioritization on where we run away, how we run away, what the best way to do it is. Can we use both sides of Highway ninety two in the event of an emergency? Like, we need a much better job for how we run away. And there's a lot of language about evacuation, but there's no clear prioritization. There are some requirements that we do things, but like every year, we have to have a clear, there should be a policy, so every year, we have a clear evaluation of our evacuation plans and whether or not they are sufficient in the event of all five of these major categories of disaster that we face. And we need to have a clear communication plan to the community on where they go. So those are, those are the things I think we need to focus on. But I think this is a great start and really appreciate it. And I really do think we need to put some policies in place in the near term so that Cal Fire and the city are aligned. We understand we want to mitigate fire. Nobody wants to allow fire. And I do think, if I understand what I what I've recently read about Vice Mayor Ruddock's point about historic districts, there are special rules that California can apply around historic districts. So we should probably do that right away, like just start looking at that very quickly so that, you know, we we don't start telling people, you know, they got to cut down their trees and remove their awnings. I mean, we need to get rid of the fire risk, but we need to do it in a way that also protects the vitality of downtown and addresses the other major areas of a risk in a holistic way. So, but thank you.
Thank you for for those comments, really well thought out comments. Thank you.
I think a lot of the things that Rick's bringing up is like Policy SCP two dash one, Policy SCP two dash three, which need more details in it on those on the dam and the flooding. And then what Rick was bringing up on the fire breaks, the only thing is it's on Section three zero four one dash three dash three. It says that it will be determined by the coast side fire protection district. So they're the ones that would determine on the fire breaks, but I'm not sure, is that something we're going to determine or are they going to determine?
May I tag team on what Commissioner Hernandez just said? One is the fire breaks. One is the fire breaks. I think you're talking about fire breaks inside the city limits. But I think we ought to include those outside the city limits, up in the hills, and work with the county to work with the respective property owners to allow fire breaks in strategic areas where CAL FIRE thinks will be beneficial to our community. Otherwise, you know, we can have all the fire breaks, we run around our houses, but if the embers are still coming down, it's not going to, it's not going to do much.
I 100% agree with you.
Secondly, on a component that I don't, I don't think it was inadvertent. I think if you read between the lines, Commissioner Hernandez was saying, in addition to all of the other policies that we should do, a critical policy is maintenance of a lot of these items. Because if you don't maintain them, then they become a very serious hazard. And I could give you an example right now, because I live right next to it, that Pillar Cedos Creek. It's got heavy metals in it. It's got tree trunks. It's got branches. It's got silt. It backs up to where we had eight feet in January of 2024. We had a 10-foot from the deck to the floor joist. And we're on piles, and we had eight feet of water going under the balcony, literally. It was all, it was all over the place. And so at a commission meeting not too long ago, measured in several months, there was a staff member that talked about cleaning up Pillar Cedos Creek from the oceans, starting with the ocean and moving inland. I haven't heard anything about that, but it desperately needs cleaning and mucking out. And then I would recommend that if it hasn't been done already, and I think it may have been done already, but Pillar Cedos Creek, it runs constantly. That would be a wonderful amenity to the city. Clean it up, put it in its natural state, maybe put some walks in there and some other, you know, nice things where you can walk from Coast Highway all the way to the ocean and back if you wanted to. I think that would be a wonderful amenity for the city. It would, it would not only be great for the community, but other people coming to visit would come and walk that, spend their money in the shops. They'd be tired from walking, you know, they'd want something to eat and so on. So those are just by a couple of observations based on tag teaming on Commissioner Hernandez. Thank you.
I'm just going to follow up on Jacob and then go to Chris. Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Clean up Pillar Cedos Creek. My only question is, how long does it take to get a coastal commission permit to do something like that? No, I don't mean that as a joke, but like, that's the first question in my head. Does that take two years or, you know, what's?
No, it's a coastal commission permit. San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board, Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Wildlife. You added one, Councilmember?
Yeah.
Yeah. There you go. So, yeah, it's a lot of permits, and it would, it would take years. Yeah.
Yeah.
But you can get a maintenance permit. And so it's, you know, it's, it's still a good idea.
Okay, remember those two words, maintenance permit? Let's see how far we can get with those.
I just wanted to go back to just the point that Commissioner Reams was making, if I might.
Hey, Rick.
Sorry.
Chris was waiting a while, so I just wanted, and then come back to you. Chris.
At that same meeting that we had on the planning commission, one of the points made by our Caltrans crew member that was here was, part of the problem is the amount of debris and trash from living encampments that are down in Pillar Cedos Creek. And that's something we can take an action item sooner than later and work harder to mitigate that. And it seems like one of the things that we could do, that's not going to require as many permits, is just enforce more of mitigation against those encampments. But in my comments, I actually had four things on action items. I saw, I felt like we're missing in alignment with our policies. One was the Pillar Cedos Creek and the enforcement I just mentioned. Second was on the Arbor Plan for the trees. We talk about having an available Arbor Plan, or at least tree identification, that would meet our requirements. But I've had a hard time finding any resource on a city website or locally that identifies trees I would want to plant in my yard or locally for businesses. Is this an action item or do we have an Arbor Plan in place yet that I'm unaware of? I've been looking, and I have a lot of questions from community members around me on what trees to plant in their yard after they've just torn out other ones. Third one was tsunami signage. I know I've seen a tsunami sign somewhere. I don't see them very often, or at least they don't stand out very much. And one of the policies we have was making sure that out-of-towners know which way to go or how to get out of town. I don't see a lot of signage. It seems like an action item that'd be very simple to add on, is to increase signage. And the first, the fourth one was noticing on evacuation plans that, you know, we are also increasing our living situations where we have lower levels of auto drivers and increased public transportation units. And we talk about a policy to make sure that there's evacuation plans for people who are in environments where they have less access to vehicles, convalescent homes, as well as 555 Kelly. We need to have some type of action plan to make sure that evacuation plans for those individuals who may be more restricted physically by not having automotive or the ability to drive are in place. So those are the four action items I saw missing. And then I had two topics of questions relating to policies more. One was, in a lot of the policies, I see a lack of clarity on language. I'm struggling to understand if a policy applies to a house build, a larger subdivision or a development. Sometimes those words get a little mucked up for me, and I have a hard time following which one's which. And the reason that I bring that up is that some of these, I look at the balance of a requirement or a policy towards a homeowner building a house. That cost is very high sometimes for a single-home development. You could spread it out over multi-units for a large complex. But if we are requiring a lot of burdened regulatory on those housing, we're driving up housing costs. And the balance of that's always a concern. How many of these policies or action items can we reduce from being applied to single-family homeowners? Say, for example, some of the earthquake, I mean, you live right next door to another house that just recently did an earthquake. Why is it that each individual house would have to do an earthquake report independently? I'm particularly talking about SEA 1.3. Does this apply to individual homes? And that's just one example where I'm trying to figure out how much regulatory burden are we putting on these small developments of a single house?
A1.3 qualifying subdivisions. This is actually just implementing what's already required by the state.
Okay, so the general statement's already in every house when it gets built or sold?
Well, this particular study was not in effect prior to 1976. So the Alquas Pillar Special Studies Zone Act was basically the state's response to, uh-oh, we built a bunch of stuff that people were living on on top of active earthquake faults.
Sure.
So this is trying to prevent that from ever happening again. That's why we have those AP zones. Those AP zones identify those areas where you have to do that special study. So what cities also, and counties also have the ability to do is that they have other faults in their community that don't have those zones. They could apply that standard if they chose to. You, as a city, have not done that. You're basically only applying what the state, the minimum state requirement is. So the onus is only on for those properties where development is proposed in that zone. They would be required to meet that action.
Okay. I'm just very conscious of not just that example, is one example I pulled out, but where we put blanket requirements of large, of a study on a small, single-family unit build and the burden that has on our housing costs, especially in a time where the cost of housing is so high for build and we are struggling to fill our housing demands and needs. And the last one I had was a question around the liquefaction. On the geoseismic policies, we spent a lot of time in the preamble talking about the liquefaction risks, but we focus mostly on landslide risks, which don't seem very broad in half of the area, but the liquefaction zones are very big. Is there a reason why we kind of mention the big risk of that liquefaction and then focus on lands, the landslides instead in our policies?
One of the main tools that a city or any jurisdiction in California has is the actual Uniform Building Code. So the building code actually does most of the mitigation for liquefaction. It's one of the reasons why there's not a lot of policy really have to add. Whereas you have existing homes may already be built on a landslide or maybe right next to a landslide. And so we're trying to try to capture, so, you know, what I do in planning, when I deal with hazards, I'm basically trying to help fix the problems of the past. Thirty, forty, fifty years ago, decisions were made, none of you were sitting behind the dais, none of you made those decisions. And now you're stuck with them and you have to live with them. So we're trying to basically help provide some of those tools to try to address some of those concerns. And oftentimes, for communities, it's things like landslides. It's things like, you know, putting homes in a flood zone, you know, and those homes are still there, or they're too close to areas that frequently flood. And unless you, you know, as a community decide that you want to have some sort of project to mitigate it, we've got to give you as many tools as possible to try to help with these conditions that you've basically been stuck with.
And my last discussion point of, of my interest is in the evacuation planning. You know, my, my family lived in a little town in Southern California. They had the Thomas Fire. And they also have flooding problems down there, too. And we had a tremendous amount of people driving through fire, trying to escape because they're stuck in communities that are behind a single-access road. And obviously, this is a huge problem here. I looked up and down our map, and there's just so many areas where we are stuck with a single in, single out.
Yep.
Sometimes it's by our own doing. Look at Silver Avenue. We've closed it down for that community. Some people want to cut in at the same time. Do we have a way of opening that up in case there's an emergency? Besides somebody trying to just drive through the gate? And then Stony Brook, you know, is there a way in and out of Stony Brook? That's a community that's now isolated in a single back corner. There's one way in, one way out. There should be a second evacuation route for those people if something does happen. I'm more concerned about that than anything else on this entire mitigation plan.
Yeah, and you're not alone in that concern. That's one of the reasons why the state has adopted some of the legislation that we have to apply to the safety element update. Senate Bill 99 looks at that single ingress/egress concern. AB 747 is focusing on evacuation assessments. These, unfortunately, because you're part of this big project, the county is in charge, and they're the ones working on doing that analysis. So we're waiting on the county to get the results of those. Did we, did we get the results? Oh, so we must have just gotten those recently. Okay.
In the document, there's maps about showing ingress and egress.
Yeah, the single ingress/egress. The evacuation assessment is still, I think, in process, so.
Question, what action plans can we do as a city to try and at least start getting the process rolling on fixing that?
So one of the things about evacuation is that the general plan has only so much runway. I'll just use that analogy to help with evacuation because ultimately evacuation comes down to your emergency management function as an organization. And that's where your emergency operations plan comes into play. That's where you have an annex, which we call an evacuation annex, that you would deploy when you're in an incident and you need to start doing evacuation. And that, that falls under whoever is in charge of emergency management within your organization. So oftentimes, the safety element is trying to at least provide some assistance to not only the planning department as well as other departments, but for whoever ultimately provides the emergency management function and whoever is ultimately calling for evacuations. Ninety-nine percent of the time, that's going to be your share for your, your police function that's going to be calling for evacuations.
Should, I guess, so should we not have an action that says we should at least come up with a plan on how to, in the future, modify our road designs or increase interest in exits?
We tried to add, yeah, we did add some policy and actions around that. But if it doesn't feel like it meets your needs, that's where we want to get some of that, that feedback. Because all of this is really good. And, and, I mean, I'm taking copious notes because we want to make sure that we fine-tune these so that it fits Half Moon Bay better, you know, for, for your future needs, for sure.
I just want to leave it, that's my most absolutely scary piece of this entire thing, is getting people in and out.
Vice Mayor Ruddock.
I just want to follow up on that. I, I agree with you. We've been waiting for, you know, an emergency evacuation plan now for a few years because of coordination with the county and all that sort of thing. But I think we should also consider where we might shelter in place safely or as safely as possible and identify those locations in the community that might function as a place to shelter in place. Because depending on the event, you know, we might not be able to evacuate everybody or as quickly as we need to. And I think we need to identify safe places to shelter in place, to hunker down until things pass and make sure that we have, you know, effective communications capabilities and that sort of thing. So I would add that. Identify places for sheltering in place. And then one more thing. So we, we mentioned in the plan, which I'm grateful for, that we coordinate with One Shoreline and the County on flood early warning systems. But I would like something specific, I know we're working on it, but some direction to coordinate specifically on the installation of a stream gauge on Pillar Cedos Creek to provide early warning for like dam inundation and excessive rainfall or release of excessive water from behind the dams. So I'm just trying to call out that thing that we're working on so that it's actually embodied in the document. And Matthew can provide more information. But we're trying to, we haven't had much luck, but we're trying to find a place to install a stream gauge so that we can do some flood early warning. We just, One Shoreline just completed installation of a repeater up on top of Skylon Cemetery so that we could locate a stream gauge on Pillar Cedos Creek. Couple of people we've addressed want nothing to do with it. We're working on a couple of other properties. But I think if we had an official document, it would be easier to talk about with people, so.
I wonder, I never hear anybody talking about using the ocean as a means of evacuation. I mean, you talk about our airport having, having airportability, but we've got an ocean. Oceans have boats. Boats can carry folks. I don't know. I don't know why that's not considered.
We have a harbor.
We have a harbor.
So there was one Dave Cosgrove mentioned, I don't know, he was kind of joking, but he was kind of serious on the CERT training. If there's a fire in the hills, go to the beach. It was pretty, it was just, you know, bring your camp here, go to the beach. That was one that he brought out, which makes sense. Where I'm living, you know, literally five-minute walk. It doesn't make it for the people on the mountain, but not driving, just walk to the beach.
I'm going to take a moment here because we have someone from the public who's been patiently sitting here, Jimmy Benjamin, who'd like to make a comment. So sorry to keep you waiting, Jimmy.
This is, you saved me some time, so thank you for that. Nobody nuggets like the other fancy Stanford degree guy, Rick. So my hat's off to you. You're much better at this than I am.
Go Cal.
Go Cal. So, go where? So on that list, I had, you know, I have five or six items. First, I want to begin by thanking Councilmember Johnson for giving me a heads-up about the safety element conversation that took place in the spring, following up comments I made to him earlier about the need for a more nuanced emergency warning system that doesn't direct everybody with a broad-brush siren that blasts across the entire town, but instead targets the evacuation message to the people that need to evacuate so that we make better use of the highway resources that are completely inundated by this nonspecific warning system that we have. And I apologize for not reading the document. Been a little busy. But if that has been addressed in the document, a policy that develops a more nuanced system that can warn neighborhoods that need it, not warn neighborhoods that don't need it, so that we're making good use of the resources, that would be very helpful. I also appreciated the comments from Commissioner Ream asking about the airport plan. In addition to the urgency that might- In addition to the urgency that might be associated with a plane falling out of the sky before it gets near the runway, there's also the issue of safety planning for Half Moon Bay Airport as a diverting airport for SFO, which in fact, it was, I believe it still is. We could land 747s here. And so part of emergency planning is not the problem that we have initiated here, but a demand for services as a result of a problem that initiates elsewhere. Looking at that list of things on the, on the slide, I see flooding and inundation that's kind of adjacent to erosion and sedimentation and liquefaction. I heard liquefaction, but I actually haven't heard anything about erosion and I haven't heard anything about sedimentation. Those are not sudden, acute things that happen. They're things that gradually happen until suddenly you have a building falling down a stream. And I waited, I hope you'll bear with me, I have a list that you haven't covered, so it's not too redundant. And I'm not keeping anybody else up but us. I'm glad that we're paying attention to Pillar Cedas Creek. There is a USGS stream gauge at the outfall of the dam. And of course, there's a gauge at Stone Creek and a gauge at Highway 1 that are in various states of repair. But a strategy that helps us understand a little better would be worthwhile, and I applaud you for thinking about that. Our risk of inundation is not limited to the Pillar Cedas Dam. There are three impoundments at the east end of the city. Two of them are in the city, one of them is not. Any of them can cause significant damage to our residential and commercial areas if those inundate. And as far as I know, there are no warning systems to address that. There's no safety planning for it. And the state laws that protect us against dam inundation do not apply because these are smaller than dams. So we could really use some help dealing with those impoundments. If you ask the people in Frenchman's Creek, they'll tell you that the dam above Pacific Ridge is a big deal. And a lot of people don't even know about the other impoundments. Let's see, liquefaction, just to clarify, almost all of Half Moon Bay is on an alluvial plain. It is an alluvial fan. It is almost all subject to liquefaction. That's well documented in the Half Moon Bay local coastal plan, although its distinction between areas that are high and very high is incorrect. The CalioS maps for, based on soils, should be showing a different map and we should be updating it. We've been building on those for years. So with respect to our consultant's comment this evening about trying to correct the problems for debris flows, I'll just say the problem is even more severe in Half Moon Bay for alluvial fans. We are largely built on alluvial fans that are subject to liquefaction. And where we have entrained water in a liquefiable soil, we get incredible accelerated erosion, which is why it is such a hazard. I'm going to stop now. I have more. When you are ready, I will speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy. You know, Aaron, I know you said earlier, you know, we don't do prioritizations. I know you're taking, I really appreciate you taking all the notes, but it does sound like there's some things that have been mentioned, you know, that people want to prioritize. And if, nothing else, you know, we have this huge plan, but for the public to get involved around each goal, you know, people want to know, well, what can I do now? And we had some, like, Chris mentioned, well, where the heck do I get the plants that are trees that are proper? I mean, wow, that's pretty basic, you know? And what can I do about storm drains in my neighborhood or? The last time we had a lot of storms, the storm drains, you know, all these tree things started getting caught at the front of the storm drain. And it was like this little ski slope, just took the water right over it, you know? It didn't go into the drain. So luckily I had some knee-high boots, you know, I just started walking around and other people noticed that. And, you know, more people did that. But people want to know, yeah, what can, what three things can I do? Start the more, again, when you start talking about emergencies and fires and floods can be really overwhelming. And the more you can give people a sense of control, we've talked about CERT, we've talked about, yeah, where can you get good information? You'll have people in your neighborhood, you'll have people with walkie-talkies. You're going to have to evacuate? Well, there'll be, there'll be coordination, but it might not be on your phone. Maybe, how hard is it to create an app to get information by zones, right? You know, you know the neighborhoods you live in. So have our emergency response communications, go onto that app and say, okay, if you're in this area, this area, this area, this is where you could be going. I mean, it shouldn't be that hard to do.
The county already has that. I'll just, I'll just share, the county already has that.
And it's very described by each where you live and, okay, do we all know about it?
Clearly no.
Is that an app?
Yeah, it, it used to be called Zone Haven. I can't remember the current genesis, yeah.
With a G.
And, and, you know, it, of course, the challenge on the coast side is that is an effective tool right up until telecommunications goes out, which is pretty common. So I think to Chris's point, not only do we need to be able to get communication out in specific areas, we've got to have multiple ways of doing it.
Yeah. Right. Okay. Well, it's about 11. Everyone getting a little tired? We could keep going or do we, I think we're ready to qualify tonight?
Can we, can we ask Leslie? At the top of this, we mentioned that we needed to prioritize our discussion on fire because that's got to get to the fire district. Have we addressed that sufficiently for what we need to finish that, finish this draft to get to fire?
Yeah, I don't think we've missed anything.
I thought I heard a November 20th date. You were trying to get comments in?
It, yeah, for, for the section on fire, especially having comments by the 20th would be really helpful so we can move this forward to Cal Fire for their first review. We will continue to take comments, you know, throughout this whole cycle. But it'd be great to have, to have your comments on the fire section.
What I'm hearing, if we have any of us or the community has comments on fire, get them to you by November 20th. And then if people have comments in general in any of our other items in the element, submit them to you. I heard one of our speakers say he still had a list, so by all means, he should be submitting it to you. Yep.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you, everybody, for staying up, staying wait. Thanks for being patient as we went back and forth, the more we got into it, I know the more questions we had. And it was, is a 56-page document, so now we might go back and have a second look. And thank you so much, Aaron, for joining us today. Really informative, really helpful, and thanks for all your note taking and look forward to working with you as we move along.
Me too.
All right. Thanks, everybody. This meeting is adjourned.